Brian, do you know what the vote was? Was it unanimous on the select board?
At that time, Mariano had left. There were only four members and the vote was 301 with Ms. Welch abstaining.
Do you know why she abstained? Did she mention?
She wanted further, she just still had questions about potential implications of the article. And it was not, there wasn't enough time or really in their schedule for us to get into a deep dive. But I think the other three voted in favor because of the tight restrictions that already exist here in front of everyone, one through seven. So this is what the discussion was going to be about. And she was not, she wanted to make it clear that she was not obviously opposed to it, but that she had more questions. And that is it.
Thank you. So they didn't have any other comments on any of the other articles that you're aware of?
No, they did not.
Okay. And you've sent it to all the boards and committees as well, correct? So we're all, they have had it?
Correct. And now it's, you know, we're obviously going to, unless we make further changes today, print what we have. This is a draft version of the warrant from the manager's office. So this is what they have. It's the most up to date that we have, meaning the planning board. So this has everything that was presented previously. And like I said, the only discussion we were potentially going to have was about a name change that I'm aware of.
Members of the planning board, do you have any questions or comments on our articles?
Well, it's Maureen. You can hear me, right?
Yep, we can hear you.
Great. So the one, I don't have an answer, so I guess you could say agnostic on it. But just the question arises because there are these other articles and we are getting, actually, we're getting more and more recommendations, both from finance committee and the select board on these foreign articles. And so as I said, I'm agnostic on how to proceed. On one hand, it should, I guess I'll say the collective we, which falls on your shoulders Heather, but maybe Brian would help. Should we be trying to get in front of these and explain them to these boards? On the other hand, there's a statutory authority for the planning board to make recommendations to town meeting. That's one of our main roles. And so we've gotten into Winchester where it's actually getting more and more where just everybody's weighing in with a lot of boards really having no authority, certainly no authority, but even no full understanding because just as with the discussion about the last one, takes a fair amount of time and explanation for us to reach out to these various individuals who really have no more authority than any other member of town meeting. So there it is. It's a question, but here we go into another town meeting. And it just seems like this is a kind of expansion that keeps continuing. And we invest a lot of time and we bring counsel in and we're ready to go. And then these boards kind of give it a five-minute overview and just kind of stick the finger in the air and then make recommendations. Thoughts?
So FinCom has invited Brian and I to their meeting. They actually invited us this evening, but obviously we couldn't go because we are in hearings. They, and then they rescheduled. I'm trying to find the date, Brian, that he rescheduled to. But FinCom has been in communication with Brian and I. They also, it's not only just about our warrant articles, but also they're looking about, they're trying to figure out the financial implications of the development in the Center Business District, is my understanding in his email. Brian, do you have the date that he is proposing? Was it the 20th?
Yeah, I'm searching it for right now on my phone because I'm sharing my screen.
And he is the chair of FinCom, who is...
So even, I would go back certainly 10 years ago and maybe even five. We weren't getting recommendations from finance committee to town meeting. They just weren't happening. So the discussion about implications on the financial impacts in the CBD, sure. That actually is going to take some real analysis because you're talking about, you know, how much revenue comes in, how many, you know, kids are coming in and so on, but that's fine if somebody wants to do it. But that really isn't what zoning is necessarily all about when you go before town meeting. So thoughts?
We have tried in the past to ask the select board not to weigh in on zoning unless they actually have read the zoning. And we've had conversations that we would like them to come sooner rather than the day of town meeting to review it. I, you know, it's not, we don't have any authority over them and vice versa really. So with that, it's really up to them and we can keep reiterating that, you know, we are two independent bodies. And so I don't know, any, do you have any thoughts? Everyone else?
I really don't know where to go with this. It's a courtesy. We send stuff out to the boards. If they don't respond, then they don't respond. If they do respond, I mean, I don't know. It's, I see it just as a courtesy. I don't see any further than that.
I mean, we're going to inform, I mean, as many people as we can because that's part of our role.
Yeah, I agree. But beyond that, we have, as you pointed out, we have no control over what the other boards do. So I guess Maureen, I'm not sure what to do with your concerns because I, you know, are you suggesting that we don't send them out because it's not?
No, first of all, they are, they're actually going into the warrant, so they're totally public. Everything we do is totally public, so that, I never would suggest that. But I suppose it's what's the, what's the message that goes with? And I really don't think I would be encouraging their reaction as a board because they're not really prepared to react. So I guess that would be my personal view. As I said, I somewhat realize that they've been weighing in, the select board's been weighing in for years. I will keep emphasizing, finance committee has not. So I do think the message when meeting is just over and over to repeat that one of our, the roles of the planning board is to advise the town meeting on the zoning. That's our role. Finance committee is advising on finance. We're advising on zoning. So to start, again, I'm not saying don't go. Don't misunderstand me. But I do think that this has to be reiterated and at some point, it's becoming, it's, it has become, I would say problematic. And I don't think town meeting members see the distinction as to who's, why we say that we want it and some other board says no. And actually, we have a lot more knowledge of how the zoning bylaw works and how it's also what, how it reflects what we think are the interests of the citizens.
So with FinCom, it's unclear if they're actually, where they stand. FinCom has a lot more turnover, especially right now. But looking at, looking at our articles, I don't know where they would even, Brian, can you, would you, what would you think that, if there's any, that they would be concerned about? The home occupations, we need to explain to them that, you know, it doesn't impact anything. It just pretty much brings many non-conforming into conformity, but it doesn't bring in, you know, outside employees. It doesn't bring in additional cars.
So yeah, I think, I think most of the members of the board were picking up on that and some weren't. So, but I mean, either way, it's there, it's both of our articles now. And, you know, I can reach out to other members of the select board if they have further questions. Like I said, Mariano wasn't there and Jackie abstained, so I can reach out to both those members and ask them if they have any questions. If you wish.
There's that. There's also, there are components of, we're, you know, we are talking about changing the name of the flexible zoning bylaw. But there are components of that which are dealing with the affordable housing component, not the capital A, but the lowercase a, which the plan and which the select board have been actively part of. So there are components of the zoning that support things that the select board have been working on. And the hard part, I just, I struggle more with them weighing in, they reviewing it the night of. And then we don't have any opportunity for discussion or, you know, it's too late or, yeah, that's the problem I have and...
Well, it's part of the nature of the animal and that's why planning boards exist in Massachusetts law because we put the time in. And I guess, I would say, as I said before, because of the reality, the cards we've been dealt with, I think there's some advantage to trying to explain it. But we have certainly seen our efforts undercut, undermined by these last minute, five minutes before, whatever, five minutes discussion, vote at town meeting. And it's become really clear that they haven't even understood them. But as I said, I think it's something, at least in the way, if you meet with them or the finance committee, to make it really clear that our time and our time, our years of study and familiarity with the zoning bylaw is why we've been, why we are charged under Mass General Law to make these recommendations to town meeting. And we want it to be clear that this is our role.
I understand that. The other thing is, as just an overview, the select board votes in the warrant. They see all of these. They've actually already seen all of ours. And they've placed, they've been reviewing them already, not from a, their, to give a recommendation to town meeting, but they've been reviewing them more to put them on the warrant. It's so, it's, we don't actually see those warrants. We don't know what's coming in on that warrant until it's actually sent to us. And there are a lot of activities that are going on that do deal with zoning that we are going to be brought in late in the game to as well. So we end up addressing those in the last minute because we don't know anything about them for various reasons, which we are going to run into as well for this town meeting. But I would like to go back to, we know it's an issue, Maureen. And Brian, all Brian and I can do is keep asking for them to include us in the conversation and they can either choose to or not to.
Yeah, I guess, as I said, as much as I can see, either way, I do, and I just, what? You'll help us all. You'll advance the cause, including the town meeting members, to keep reminding anybody and everybody that what we do as a planning board is authorized under the law.
And mandated by the law too.
Really? It is. That's our role. So anybody else getting into this recommendations to town meeting, which is what we keep hearing. And what's your recommendation at town meeting? Well, actually, their recommendation is not the same as our recommendation. It just isn't. It doesn't carry the same weight. But town meeting members don't understand that. And I actually believe our friends, and they are on these other boards also, I don't think they fully understand it. So just if you can clarify, and Brian, if you too can clarify, I think this is, we need to be doing more clarifying. I guess that's one thing I'd ask.
We can also take care of that too as well, Maureen, in our updates to town meeting.
Yep.
And I think we can also take care of that if we respond to the other board's decisions at town meeting, depress them so that they fully explain how they came to that decision and how it relates to their jurisdiction.
A good point.
Because, to be honest, they may be unaware of things and we could, you know, as much as we talk to them in private or send them mail or email, until they're directly addressed at town meeting when they make these comments, that's, I think, where we have to just say, you know, anyway, I've already said that. So yeah, anyway.
Okay.
I'm done. Thank you.
So one of the main items was changing the name of flexible zoning?
Yeah, I thought that was a great suggestion from, I'm sorry, my brain is totally blanking. From one of the people who attended who is not on the planning board. Anyway. So why don't we call it the Natural and Historic Resources Protection Act?
This is not an act.
Yeah, no.
I know. I'm channeling, I'm channeling a useless naming of legislation.
I think something like, something like preservation zoning, resource zoning. The term preservation could, you know, mean too many things to too many people. The term resource zoning doesn't say a lot.
How about?
Were we just saying about incentive?
Incentive zoning was one on the list. I think that was the, what else was, but I think those were the three, actually.
I think incentive is the best if we're changing.
Yeah.
So how about zoning to incentivize preservation?
No, honestly.
Which parts do you dislike?
Which part? I think the, well, just keep it simple. Incentive is good. I thought flexible because that suggests that it's not as rigid. Flexible seems good, but...
I don't know what incentive zoning means because I don't know what it's an incentive to do.
I think the comment that someone had made was that it needs to have the word historic in it.
Well, it should have historic or natural. I agree. If we like the word incentive, that should be in there as well. So unfortunately, we're missing one more word to link them together.
And?
I don't think this is a title, like a title of a book. And I've been through a few title, book title exercises in my day. I just think this is, I keep it simple.
It would just be natural and historic resource zoning.
That would be okay.
But the goal is to get incentive in here because it is incentive.
There is, I mean, is this purpose for the title and its function in the zoning bylaw? Or is this a marketing tool? Again, I'm a product of publishing.
So this is the name of a section. We have to call it something. It's that simple.
So it's the name of a section. It really is about creating, breaking, honestly, I think there's a lot of history and there's state, if you were to Google it and the state, I would just go back to flexible because it's something that's a term recognized in the state. So it's not, again, if it's not a marketing tool, let's go with something from a legal perspective.
Well, it serves as both. So I think that, I agree with you that in terms of what should be in the zoning is not necessarily, shouldn't be a marketing tool, but...
Well, it's actually a waiver.
It's a waiver.
Yeah.
Zoning waiver.
It would be a natural and historic resource waiver.
Okay, that works. Brian? Does it work for you, Brian?
Yeah, I mean, I kind of was going to give the exact argument, Maureen, that you had given if, given the opportunity just because it's a recognized term.
Yeah.
The thing is, you know, the question I would, then I went through is, well, who's really going to be taking advantage of these? Is it going to be people that do this for a living? Are these going to be developers that are taking it? Or is it going to be homeowners? And I got into this whole other conversation. But I kind of felt that it's an agreed upon term. I'm not opposed to anything that's a little more explanatory. Yeah, I mean, I believe the argument that really took hold with the board was the idea flexible means like, it has this negative connotation, like if things get squishy and, you know, bad people do bad things kind of thing. Like the developers will take advantage of this. It was more of like a negative connotation. And the idea is to make it more of a positive thing that something is being saved as part of this exchange.
How about resource protection zoning?
That's, that's...
Well, that sounds like it's limiting. And actually, this is an expansion or it opens up a little more. So this is, this is liber, I guess you'd say, well, it's less constrictive. It allows a release. It's a release from the constrictions of the zoning.
Okay, I mean, first off, I don't know that we need zoning in there because it's in the zoning bylaw. So that makes it one word shorter. So we could have waivers for protection of natural and historic resources?
Maybe.
Can you repeat that again?
Waivers for, I think that was better, just for understanding, waivers for natural and historic resources. Waivers is the first word?
Yep.
Yeah. Well, that'll do it.
Do we, do we want the word protection in there at all or just is that implied?
I think it's implied. Also, protections is heavily used throughout the historical demo delay, which is a different type and I would, that to some people has a different feeling to it. So I'd like to try to not use that and just focus on that it is, it's a waiver.
Okay, works for me.
If you have natural and historic resources. So I think that's good.
I think so too. And I agree with Heather. The word protection, again, it also sounds restrictive where this is actually loose, gives a little wiggle room.
If we're...
The waiver does that in the outset. So anyway, yeah, I'm fine with this.
So that addresses a couple of things that we had outstanding, which is why we had to continue our hearing. I...
We need to vote this, so we gotta vote that in.
I'm interrupting. But how about waivers instead of for natural? And how about waivers regarding? It's a little longer, but...
Okay.
Help? Or waivers relating to? I know it's clunkier and I was trying to avoid clunky, but relating to? Waiver relating to, that at least makes, I think that's pretty clear. And then you have to read it, but at least.
I like that. That's good.
I actually wasn't going to vote. I had a question of the board, Brian.
Okay.
So I did want to go through article that dealt with the Center Business District. I know we got a lot of feedback. My interpretation of that feedback was that they wish we were more restrictive, but at least it's a start. Is that the planning board's interpretation as well on that?
I thought that the neighborhood, yes, the overwhelming response from the butter neighborhood was to make it more restrictive. So I agree with your assessment of that.
Okay, because I...
I'm not in agreement with that, with, their argument didn't sway me.
No, it didn't sway me either. I just, you know, I just want to make sure that they were not asking it to be pulled. That it was, that your interpretation was what I interpreted is that they just wish it was more restrictive recommendation to town meeting. But I don't agree with, to make it more restrictive. I just wanted to make sure that was that. So if we're going to put on the warrant that, that it is, you know, something from their perspective versus they are just absolutely, just not at all in agreement with it. And I didn't get that. And I don't see any member, Mr. Stevens is here, actually.
I'm not...
Just to the board, do you mind if I quickly ask Mr. Stevens his feedback on that?
My response would be, would it change the way we did this? And I wanted to note that it's 7:30.
Okay, thank you. Is the board okay if I ask Mr. Stevens the question I just asked you?
That's fine.
Mr. Stevens, did you hear the question I just asked the board regarding your positions on the articles regarding the rezoning of the Center Business District, the North Ward?
I'm sorry, I missed the question.
My question, and I know you don't, you're not, you don't have the authority to speak on all your butters, but I know you've been very active on behalf of some of them. With that area, are you comfortable with what is being presented? My interpretation of what was said by many... Uh, my interpretation of what was said by many in the area is that they wish it was more restrictive, but at least it's something. Uh, the intention was not to ask for it to be pulled.
I believe, I believe that is correct. Everyone would like to see it more restrictive. I won't say everyone, I'm sorry. Most, it seems to me, would like to see it more restricted, but uh, I think people would just like to see it go forward at this time, not to pull it.
Okay, thank you. All right, that was my big question I had that I, I really didn't get to in our last because we had to cut it short. Um, board, are you uh, ready to make a motion?
Yes, can we do all of them at once?
Yes, you may. You can start with um, Article four. And it will go uh, through the revised version of today, who's ever going to make the vote, the version of ten thirteen. Um, through uh, Article four through Article ten.
And just to the board note, sorry, my kids are a lot in the background. Um, the affirmative vote of three members is required to place the article on town meeting warrant.
So I'll, I'll make the motion, but I'm gonna need a little coaching from Brian to put Articles four through, Brian is what number?
Ten.
Ten. I'm looking eleven, uh, to put Articles four through ten on the um, warrant for fall uh, twenty twenty town meeting.
I will second that.
Thank you. Do you want any discussion?
No comment.
Without any discussion, can we do roll call vote, please? All those in favor?
Uh, Meister, aye.
Jurious, aye.
Von Mary, aye. Oh, is that Heather?
Yeah.
Hi Heather, welcome.
We just need three, right? This is Wolf, aye.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you gonna, are you gonna abstain? Are you going to? Are you abstaining? I'm unclear.
No, Cheryl voted aye.
I voted aye. I just, um, I'm learning, so I thought I heard you needed three. I just was trying to be helpful, so.
Oh, yep. Great, thank you. All right, motion passes. The article, um, Articles four through ten will be placed on the town meeting, uh, fall town meeting twenty twenty warrant. Um, and uh, continue, we will continue to also, um, if you have feedback or anything and want to continue, uh, anything, please let us know. You can reach the planning board at, planningboard@winchester.us. Um, do we have a motion to close this hearing?
So moved.
I'm a second.
All right, second by Meister. All those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Jurious, aye.
Meister, aye.
Von Mary, aye. Oh, Heather Hannan?
Oh yeah, it was at the same time as someone else. Hannan, aye.
Wolf, aye.
All right, motion passes to close the hearing. So um, it is seven thirty-three. Um, we have going forward, we have a, a handful of more hearings uh, coming before the planning board today. I'm going to just go through it for everyone since we have quite the um, participants that are present. Um, we have the uh, hearing at seven thirty for ten sixteen Mount Vernon Street. We have a continued public hearing for eight thirty for Lowering Court subdivision. We have a hearing at nine o'clock for six fifty-four Main Street. Um, and then thereafter, we will be going over the ZBA special permits. Um, our role in this is to give recommenda- recommendations to the ZBA on the petitions that are going before them. And then thereafter, to discuss Abbey Road tripart, party agreement. If it's okay with the board, I'd like to remove the minutes for September eighth off our agenda based on how packed it is. Um, and come back to that uh, at our next meeting if available, because I think we're going to be extremely tight on time.
That's fine, Heather. Thank you.
Um, the other question I had for members of the board, we typically um, do um, updates. Did you want to do those this evening, or would you like to wait those? Oh, just various updates on what's going on.
I'm fine with passing on those.
Same.
All right, so let's continue to the public hearing, ten sixteen Mount Vernon Street. Um, I'd like to call the meeting, the public hearing for ten sixteen Mount Vernon Street at seven thirty-four PM on October thirteenth, twenty twenty. Um, as a reminder to all, the meeting is being recorded uh, for the benefit of those who are just coming for the hearing. Um, it also will be available on Wind Cam and it currently is being broadcasted um, on, um, on Wind Cam, but on not the typical government channel due to, I believe, the debates that are occurring this evening. Um, I am Heather Von Mary. I am the Chair of the Planning Board. And members of the Planning Board, please go around and introduce yourselves.
Dear Jurious.
Maureen Meister.
Heather Hannan.
Darrell Wolf.
And also with us is Brian Zikali. Brian, can you say hello so they can hear your voice?
Hello there, this is Brian.
And he's a town planner. Um, we also, I believe, has some um, uh, staff that will be joining us as well from engineering. And also um, and also just so everyone knows, you see Nancy on here. Nancy is our recording secretary and is taking minutes on the planning board's behalf. Thank you Nancy for that. Um, so today, uh, the hearing is called to inform the public about potential changes to the, what, sorry. Let me go back to my other. So, yeah, okay, let's go. The purpose of the public hearing is to, do you want to pull it up? Thank you. Is to go over the following matter for a special permit and site plan review of ten sixteen Mount Vernon Street LLC of John Le- Levitt, to construct a third story with four new residential units located therein on an existing two-story structure located at ten sixteen Mount Vernon Street. The partial ID is nine dash twenty-nine within the town of Winchester, Mass. The use of the structure will remain mixed use with commercial on the first floor, residential on the second floor, and proposed residential on the third floor. The applicant seeks relief from floor area ratio. Um, going forward on to our procedures, um, our goal is this evening, just so everyone knows, we will be going through um, as much as we can in an hour. And if needed, we will then uh, continue the hearing at that point. Um, so uh, we will, if you speak, I please ask that you state your name and company, if applicable, and address uh, for the record. I ask that all your questions and comments be directed to me, the Chair. And also speakers are asked um, to turn their mics off. Um, usually you would come to our table, but in this situation, when you are uh, asked to speak, you could turn your mic off, speak, but then when you are done, we ask that you re-mute yourself. If you would like um, to um, speak again for whatever reason, you need to raise your hand. And I will decide whether um, we will um, bring you into the conversation at a time pending on its appropriateness. Um, if you are unable to raise your hand, please unmute yourself and uh, just let us know. Um, and from there, I do have the right to exclude irrelevant immaterial or repetitive information. Um, and I ask that everyone be very respectful to everyone here. This is, doing it on this way is actually very difficult. However, the planning board has found by us not, our faces not being on, that we all can really focus on the same material and everyone sees exactly what the planning board is seeing at the same time. Um, so I'm going to first um, let the applicant begin. And I'm going to start with giving the applicant fifteen minutes to present the project. And we will go from there, um, if they require more time. If you can hear my children in the background, my apologies. It's part of the Zoom world. Um, so uh, to begin, Brian, do you want to introduce the applicant who's going to be presenting today?
Sure. So John Levitt, um, the petitioner is going to kick us off. Um, and then he's going to introduce um, uh, his, uh, his team after that. So John, if you uh, can unmute yourself, um, and I'll get the rendering up and uh, you can take it away.
Can you hear me, Brian? Hello?
Yeah, yeah, go right ahead.
Hi, my name is John Levitt. I am a Winchester resident. And also I am the manager of ten sixteen Mount Vernon LLC. I am seeking relief for an FAR for a third floor, uh, which the building will still be mixed use. Um, I would like to tell the board that there is a need for this in the town for downsizing of people with bigger homes. And it's at a price point that doesn't exist in the town where they're very small units and it's probably ha- fifty percent less than what other units are going for in town. At this point, I'm going to turn the meeting over to John McConnell, R.L. Wensera.
Shall I go first?
Go right ahead.
Okay. Um, I have been working with John uh, on this project strictly as a sort of an exterior design uh, consultant. I am an architect. I live here in town. Uh, I live at Four Wildwood Terrace and have lived in town for thirty-four years. Um, and uh, at our last meeting, when this came up, uh, I spent some time uh, talking about uh, how to, the, the various things that I did to try and derive a pleasing effect for a third floor on this building and came to the conclusion uh, that the best way was to treat it as what is known in architectural history as an attic story. Uh, the, the name comes from uh, classical architecture from Attica in Greece, actually, in which uh, it's, an attic story is a story that's above the principal cornice of the building, uh, which you can see very clearly here, uh, is the existing top uh, of the building. And so it's a, it's a, a, a much shortened story above that uh, with a de-emphasized uh, uh, cornice, much smaller than the principal cornice on the building. Uh, and uh, that seems to be the, the most pleasing way to, to add a third story here and, and generate uh, more housing in the Central Business District here. So that's, that's what I've come up with. Um, this rendering shows that story being a little bit orangier than uh, than it probably would be. It would be um, somewhat subdued color up there, a little bit grayer, more in keeping with the brick uh, that uh, is on the second story of the building. So I, I guess that's what I have to say. We have another rendering of this uh, taken from a different angle. Yeah, here we are. Same thing. So that the, the, the fenestration uh, continues uh, that which is below it, the windows line up. Uh, and rather than repeating the beautiful bay windows that are on the second floor, we would simply go to double, double fenestration above each bay. Uh, and then uh, perhaps uh, just little roundels in the blank spaces, some kind of ornament up there uh, to give it a, 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 a more appealing visual effect. That's it.
Thank you. Was there someone else who wanted to present from the team? Did I understand that correctly?
Yes. Where is that?
Uh, yes, uh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Perfect. Uh, my name is Albert Alucina. Uh, I live in thirty-seven Jackson Street in Newton. And um, I'm the designer, the designer and architect of the, the addition uh, at the second floor. Uh, John requested to develop that, uh, four new units uh, in compliance with the requirement of the zoning department. And um, from the last conversation that we had with the board, also we catch some uh, worries about the height because we were proposing uh, a stairs go straight up to the roof. And that creates some concerns. And then we took the decision and followed those concerns, uh, very important for us. And we removed that access directly, exactly, thank you Brian, directly to the roof. Uh, so we create a different uh, type of access to the roof, more like service type ladder. And so we reduced the impact of that uh, uh, I would call it a box uh, because it's actually the entrance, because it's going to be a flat roof uh, for the, for the roof services. But it's not really that important now. We remove it. And it's basically a flat roof unless that we have just the, the small um, a little high top part of the uh, elevator lift, which is uh, uh, we are working with, trying to reduce it at zero, but we are, we don't know. We believe it's going to be around three feet or so. So at the end of the road, the building will stay in thirty-eight feet, uh, forty inches, which is, you know, uh, the, our goal. Uh, and, and at the same time, I would like to say that um, we took the, the considerations uh, and the worries from the last meeting uh, as a very important points. And then, and, and I, I, I believe we, we, we did, we did a great job. We, we reduced and actually we removed those elements that were a concern for the town. Yeah, does anybody have any question regarding the, the design? Because the results is pretty straightforward. We are adding, as the John explained before, we are adding four units, one bedroom each one. And um, and uh, we follow also the design for elevations as John uh, as well recommend. So that, that exactly. So that is basically what it is. Correct. Perfect. Exactly. So that is uh, how we're going to end with the design. And uh, and the height, which is in this point, we're trying to clear and keep it as simple as possible and clear as possible as the members, some members of the board uh, raise their hand and address this concern. Does anybody have any question about it?
Not what, you're not yet, most likely, but we can, um, there'd be a point in the hearing where we, um, the planning board will probably ask you a question.
Okay.
Um, does that uh, conclude? You have seven minutes left, but of your time. Uh, would that conclude your presentation?
Yeah, because this is, uh, uh, as I said, I mean, this is not the first time the board saw this uh, uh, addition that we're trying to, you know, propose. And um, and I don't want to extend too much repeating what we already talked about it. I understand as well that we are, um, you know, uh, taking in consideration the time. And um, so uh, yes, I think uh, this is, this is it. This is uh, what I would like to uh, to, to express regarding the design because from, since the last time, it didn't change uh, chose about. What we changed was actually the, the access to the roof for the, for the large box that we created before. It's now it's gone.
Thank you. Um, so I'm going to have you mute yourself. Uh, we're going to move on to um, the memos and letters. Um, the memos and letters received by the board, and Brian, can you summarize them?
Um, so um, the, the ones that I have uh, received are from the Winchester Historical Commission and the Design Review Committee. So hold on just a second. Um, okay, so are you, what is, is everyone seeing the PDF or are we looking at minutes now?
Uh, we can see the meeting minutes.
Okay, so.
Brian, can you zoom in a little more? They're very tight.
Yeah, I will. Uh, let me get down to ten to sixteen Mount Vernon. So for ten to sixteen Mount Vernon, um, they recommended unfavorable action based upon the following reasons. Um, the proposed addition to this flat roof building is substantial change in character, proportion and massing. The proposed third floor should be set back from the building facade, such as to minimize visual impact. And this would have a highly significant impact on the historic resources through the modification of the existing historic structure. So that was the Design Review, um, Design Review Committee. And then I have, I have um, unofficial minutes from the Historical Commission uh, saying that it was um, unanimous unfavorable for um, almost the exact same reasons that I just mentioned from the Design Review Committee. Um, the town engineer is, is here to, uh, if there's any questions, but this is um, uh, in terms of stormwater. Um, you know, the, the, the whole site is completely covered as is, and they're putting a third floor in it. So I would imagine there's not major issues, but if there's any questions for Beth or if Beth, you wanted to say anything in relation to your memo, now would be a good time, or you could.
No, I don't, I don't have anything at this time. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Beth. Great.
From the Historical Commission, it was, there were like a full paragraph.
Yeah, I'm just trying to summarize. If you can, if you know more the details, if you know them, I would say now's the time.
Well, there's a paragraph. It's not that.
Yeah. Yep. Hold on a second. Sorry about that. I'll bring it up. So this was their meeting minutes from the 28th and we are 10 to 16, Mount Vernon Street. I'll make this a little bigger. First, they're explaining what's going to happen here. Here it is. Chair Lomigie expressed concern that the third floor will protrude too heavily over the street and disrupt the character of Mount Vernon. You know, the Historical Commission has a duty to uphold the character of a neighborhood as well as its visual characteristics in order to ensure that the historical character of the town center remains consistent. Mr. Clemson stated that the proposed plan would disrupt the facade and proportions of the building. Boswell stated her belief that Mount Vernon Street is one of the most iconic views in Winchester Center. And then this proposed project would disrupt that view. It was a weird way they did the motion and they did it in the opposite. So they said the Historical Commission finds no adverse effect on the historical cultural resource. And it was zero in favor. I double made sure that this was correct because I told them maybe in the future to go the other way, to redo a motion, so it's in the affirmative. But anyway, it was unanimous that it did have an adverse effect on a historical cultural resource. And then the only other memo that the board has received is my own.
Can you summarize your own, Brian, please?
So I agreed with the need for these types of housing. Let me get my memo up here. I certainly agree with the need for this type of housing in the center with smaller units like this for downsizing definitely makes sense. I agreed with the Design Review and the Historical Commission that the third floor needs work with a potential design consultant. So I think that's in terms of my recommendations for this evening, we can certainly get into parking waivers and because they're creating four new units without any additional parking. So these are some other issues that I think don't make sense to get into at the moment, but I think it is important to kind of set the Design Review in motion so that we can usher this project further.
Thank you, Brian. Any other comments from Public Works Health Department or anyone?
No, I did not hear any other comments. The only other, I think, thing that I wanted to ask, I guess, of the applicant is still finding just some, there's some math that doesn't make, I'm just not getting the same math. So I don't know if that's more of an offline conversation, not for now, but that's something that I would like to talk to the applicant about. And outside of that FAR calculation, which is the only reason they're in front of the board in the first place, you know, I think everything else is kind of ready to kind of move forward. I hope everyone saw the note about the affordable units. So there are four new units being created and therefore not, there is not going to be the requirement for an affordable unit to be as part of the project. So basically, when it came down to it, I didn't have many issues with the parking. I think the FAR just needs to talk with them to figure out how they got their math. The design, I think, should be go forward with 53G. And the affordable units was really, I think, a condition should be placed on the permit so that any further units, if they get created either through an addition or whatever, a division of another unit on the second floor, for example, that they would require an affordable unit. That was all I had.
Thank you, Brian. I do have a question of the Historical Commission, and I see that John Clemson is here. Previously, the Historical Commission has supported this project. What is different from when you previously supported it?
This is John Clemson from the Historical Commission. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, John. We can hear you.
Well, the concept has always been that the visual intrusion of potential additional story additions would have to be minimized. This building is in the National Register Historic District and it has, it retains a high degree of what we call integrity. It retains its original form, detail, articulation, and and the concept we've tried to be consistent about is that additions to flat roof buildings need to be set well back from the plane of the facade and side elevations in order to minimize or eliminate the visual impact of this kind of an addition. This design obviously is, it changes the whole profile of the building and disrupts the proportions and, as other commissioners have pointed out, the viewshed. So I'll try to be as clear as possible. The idea is that the bulk of this addition should be moved well back from the plane of the facade and side in order to, if not make it disappear, make it, its visual impact minimal. So happy to answer questions. I hope that explains it.
And thank you, John. And if you are able to stick around, that would be great because if we can get to a discussion, I'd like to have you stay for that if possible. Going on to, we are now going to move, as long as there's no other town staff or other boards present, we're going to move into the opening of public comment period. So if you are interested in speaking, can you please raise your hand? If you do not know how to do that, or you are on a telephone and are unable to do that, you can unmute yourself and just let me know if you're interested in speaking. I do need to know if you wish to speak in favor or in opposition. And then we will go into, we will go into time limits for each and go to take turns for those who are in favor and those who are in opposition. So if you're interested in speaking, please raise your hand. And I will then come up with a list of speakers and we will go from there. And we currently are running on schedule, so we have 30 more minutes. With only seeing one hand raised, I am going to, it doesn't matter whether in opposition or not, I'm going to allow that person to speak. Nancy? Oh. Are you present, Nancy? Nancy, would you like to speak?
Yes.
All right. You're given five minutes of time to speak and I'll let you know what happens. I look forward to hearing from the public.
Thank you very much. I'm speaking as curator of the Historical Society and longtime chair of the Archives Advisory Committee. And I also am a member of the Network for Social Justice, so I feel committed to the need for housing. But I also want to save the historic nature of the downtown. And I'm wondering whether this is the best use of housing. And I would encourage following up with the recommendations of the Historical Commission. This house, this building is right next to the North Mark Bank, which is such a historic icon in town. And I think as you look up at the Congregational Church, it takes away from the view. So I hope for more study. I trust John McConnell and I hope that he can work with the commission to create a more compatible vision that meets the needs of both the commission and the planning board. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Not seeing any other hands raised, I am going to move to board discussion. Members of the board, Deib, you don't need to raise your hand.
I'm just so in the use to doing that in my other Zoom meetings.
Go ahead, Deib. You can start. Go ahead.
So I have one technical question, namely, it stated that the only thing that's going to be changed are four units on the third floor. But if I look at page A3 of your proposal, which is a second floor plan, it indicates a whole bunch of new walls that are being put in. So my question is, what are those new walls? Does that unit five actually exist at the moment? Can you just explain what you mean by new walls?
Mr. Jurius Deib is asking the proponent question. I'm going to allow them to answer the question. Mr. Levitt or one of the members of your team would like to answer that question?
Unit number five does exist now, and basically, we're going to take out a little portion of it for the second means of egress. And we're going to come up with the stairs on Winchester Place. And that's going to reduce, I can't see the actual unit number, but I believe it's unit number one. Reduce the size of unit number one.
I had one further question on that plan, if I may.
Yes.
And that is, there's an exit located to the left of unit five? And where does that exit actually go?
It goes on to a platform of the existing building next door to it.
And if the next door of building decides to build up, will you lose that egress?
They can't.
They can't?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So it's Maureen. And can I say now?
Go ahead, Maureen.
Brian, there are a bunch of documents I'm going to be asking for, and I also ask you to have a couple visuals for me. To begin with, can you pull up the zoning bylaw for site plan review? And let's see if I can find what give you the number here. What we're looking for, of course, is in section seven because that's the section for the CBD. So it's pretty straightforward. It's 7.3, 015, 05. Whoop, it goes fast. I know it slips. So 7.3, do I have an old one? Couldn't be because I'm looking at 7.3, 015, 05. Oh, did we renumber? I've got an old bylaw already at seven. Okay. Oh, no, it's seven, it's 0.5, and then it's subsection seven. So this is one thing we've not wrestled with. It's actually in, this is for our CBD. And we are doing not just special permit, we're also doing site plan review. And that includes protection and preservation of existing historic structures, vistas, and the natural features that are relevant. But we do have both the existing historic structure, it's called out in the zoning bylaw as a contributing structure in our zoning as a historic structure. And it's also, of course, as we've heard, a national register contributing building. There's also this word vistas. We've not defined it in the zoning, but it's something that's part of something that we're trying to protect and it falls under site plan review. So with that in mind, I ask Brian if you could have ready, please, the master plan.
So I wasn't sure if you wanted the action plan or the report?
No, the report, the shorter version. There we go. So on page eight, here's what we see. This is an iconic view, if ever there were one. That's Janet's word. I didn't come up with that. She came up with that. It was noted in the minutes of the Historical Commission. This is, this is a vista, if ever there were one. And I didn't choose this picture. I assume our consultants did. But this has to be one of the most, what, beautiful scenes we've got in the whole town. This is a vista. It's coming out of the library. It's coming out of Town Hall. It's crossing maybe over to the parking lot at the Jenks. It's coming in from I-93 down onto Mount Vernon Street. It's a gorgeous view. You put another story on the building that's under consideration. You are creating a substantial change to a historic resource. And this is a vista. We are here with our site plan review to consider the impact on the vista that this would alter. And I believe that's something that this board really owes to ourselves and to our community to figure out what we are going to achieve. It's really an interesting relationship of the buildings in this vista because you end up with these gables from the Public Safety Building and the old Winchester Savings Bank Building. And you move forward and then you get this line that takes you all the way into the rotary and then your eye just lifts. It's so dramatic and it's beautiful onto the spire of the Congregational Church. So there's something right now that's very beautiful in the way it's flowing. And I didn't pick the picture. Again, our consultants did. A similar view, and it's not even the same photograph, is actually in the RFP for the water field development, which is on the other side of the train biaduct. But this has to be one of the most important views in the town center and something that we've got to take really serious about changing. So that's my first point about site plan review. Now, let's move on to our center business district regulations. And we did find those were cited appropriately and we have to take those pretty seriously too. So I'm done with that. And if you can bring up the regulations governing section 7.3 for the purpose of the viewing In there, we have a very important section that's directly relevant to this, which the proponents did not address, and it's section 5.10. In the CBD regs, there's a whole area that is about 5.8. Well, let's, let me phrase it this way. Section five is guidelines for existing historically significant buildings. So that's exactly what we've got in front of us right now. So under roofs, 5.10, we've got a whole lot of language. We could read that, but I will move along. And thank you, Brian. We have flat roofs. So when you read that, it says, this is plain English. This isn't fancy legal language. The addition of stories to flat The addition of stories to flat-roofed buildings will be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. In other words, each one is going to stand alone. And we have to think about what we're doing on each one of these. So it tells us about incentives to restore additional floors that once existed on a historic structure. So the zoning bylaw contemplates that another floor can be added to the Lyceum Building. So we should be thinking about what's going there as well, um, as we figure out what's going to happen with this building. Now, additional stories should be designed to minimize visual impact on the proportions and massing of the original structure. The most common approach to meeting this guideline is to step additions back from the facade or side building plane. So this is the relevant part, it's most germane, that we're supposed to, it's, it's our, it's ours, we own it as a planning board. If there's any addition to be contemplated to this flat-roofed building, that we've got to consider how to minimize the visual impact. And back to that vista we just looked at that's in our master plan, how to minimize the visual impact on the proportions and massing of the original structure. And this includes stepping the additions back. And we're not talking about a little bit, like a couple of feet. We're talking about really stepping it back to minimize the original proportions and um, original proportions and massing of that structure. So this is our zoning, and this is our, um, these, this is our CBD regs. Now, um, when we look at, and Brian, I asked, I just asked you for one of the historic photographs, um, if you could show that. We really should have been presented that at the beginning of this hearing for the board. Because whenever we get a historic building in front of us, we want to have some understanding. Ideally, it would come from some staff person who explains to us what the historic building is, just the way you have in a demolition delay hearing, a discussion about what's the history and what's the historic, um, the nature of the historic building. So we need to open up that photo, and this is Nancy Schrock, gets a lot of credit for making this happen. But we need to somehow get in there so you can see this. Um, I was hoping, Brian, you could do it. This is from, um, the photographs, this is from the towns archives. And these, thanks to Nancy and Ellen Knight and people who worked for the archives, have been scanned. The photograph was taken in the eighteen, around probably eighteen, I'm sorry, around nineteen hundred. And we have, I learned that the building, um, which is, it's on a street that was once called Pleasant Street, this building dates from the eighteen nineties. Now here's where, in the world that we have of, um, of people on our board, this is one area where I actually have some major strength. Because I understand the history of the building and how it fits with the context of a town and its significance. What happened here was the building on the right, the Brown and Stanton block, that dates from the eighteen seventies, that's on the right. Then what followed was the construction of Winchester Town Hall and the Winchester Savings Bank, which is visible, you can see the savings bank here. Those date from the eighteen eighties. Then comes the White Building, as it's called, where Lucius is located, and that dates from the eighteen nineties. Somewhere in this picture, I didn't look it up, but there was a fire on the Lyceum Block on the left, and it was rebuilt. So that's maybe, let's say, around eighteen nineties. And then on comes, or maybe it was eighteen eighties, but along comes then the, um, our, the building under consideration now, and it's with the Oriole windows. And that dates from the eighteen nineties. So what you have is a series of architects working on designing these buildings. And that's a key word here, because the architects are designing buildings in total, in their entirety, with the idea of what the context is. This building is designed to fit in the context, and it's a context that still exists, which is pretty remarkable. What I also find interesting is, and it's a matter of understanding the significance of the building, and I was shocked when I learned that it dates from the eighteen nineties. You have gone from the Queen Anne Building on the corner, the old, um, I don't know, bookends, we'll call it, building. That goes from the eighteen, um, eighteen seventies. Then you get the much weightier, uh, the romanesque revival of the Town Hall and the Savings Bank Building. And you get this kind of transitional Queen Anne, um, heavy, weighty building of where Lucius is located. And then you get this new little building, this gem, this jewel of a building, uh, where the florist is located, the building Mr. Levitt owns. It's extremely light. And it fits with the transition that's taking place in Boston architecture in the eighteen nineties. It's a move away from this weighty, Richardsonian, romanesque. And it's a revival in particular, not just colonial revival in particular, it's a federal revival building. And the question I had is, wow, somebody really knew what he was doing. And I'll say he, because I don't think there were, I know who the women were. There were about three women practicing architecture at this time, um, in Boston. But this is a man who really understood what the newest ideas were in design. And he, although it's a small project, he's taking a much lighter approach. And he's responding to, what's really cool, there's this huge threat of demolishing the State House in Boston. This is mid eighteen nineties. The Bullfinch State House is under, um, under debate. There's a committee reviewing the demolition of the State House. The committee voted to demolish the State House. Boston Society of Architects goes into full gears, the full, first time ever that there's an organized group of architects who go into a preservation mode, preservation battle, to save the State House. Ultimately, it came down to a full vote of the legislature. And it was this hair, uh, what should I call it, a cliffhanger. And right around eighteen ninety-three, they vote to preserve the State House. And it's rededicated and rebuilt in eighteen ninety-seven. So whatever is going on here is really interesting, because this person who designed this building understood the significance of the, um, this new enthusiasm for the colo- for, we'll call it colonial revival, but for the federal revival, this new enthusiasm for federal period design. Um, in addition to the very lightweight Oriole windows of that building, when you go around the corner, there's this kind of little fan light over the main, the side entrance with fluted plaster. It's not a real expensive building, but it has a much different brickwork. It's different brick that's used, it's laid in different pattern. It's, it's a, it's a totally different, we've turned a corner in this, um, with this building in Winchester Center, and it reflects what's going on in Boston at the most sophisticated level. So throwing an extra story on this really transforms it and is not the building that we've got, whether in terms of its proportions and massing or in terms of the, the story that it tells, if people know what the story is. So that's about the architecture. Um, what I want to say is that we do have a, um, but there is some interest in what other, or I have some interest in what other towns are doing. And I would, uh, this past Sunday, I went with my husband, we went over to Belmont again, because I wanted to see Leonard Street. There's not a single building on Leonard Street that has an extra story on it. Uh, they're all intact, they're, 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 the word is integrity. Each building has its own integrity. Um, when I have mentioned before to the board, because we've seen Mr. Levitt several times, you go into Lexington Center, you go into Concord Center, these buildings all have their integrity. They're, they're just adding these extra stories is, is a real slippery slope here. Uh, as we put, as we consider putting extra stories on top of these historic buildings and disrupting or changing, um, what we, what we've inherited. We have lots of opportunities coming into the town to add affordable housing. We've got more than a hundred units coming in probably in the next year. This board is going to be permitting, we've got Waterfield, we've got Elmwood's already being sold. We've got the, um, the Main Street Building. So that's not really, uh, to add four units to compromise one of our historic resources, my mind isn't the way to go. Um, I do want to go back to one more document, and then I'm done. But Brian, I did ask you if you could have that, there was a master plan survey. Can you bring that up? Um, we did that survey at the beginning of the master plan process. Um, and we had a brochure that was created for us.
Yes, I have that, just a second.
So this was the survey that was done, and I believe around a thousand people, am I wrong, Brian, maybe more, finally responded?
I believe it was fourteen hundred unique, uh, unique users.
So there were a lot of questions, and we got a lot of information. And this became the foundation for our master plan. So if you could scroll down, um, this was what we learned. And a little bit further down. Winchester's the most important assets. And then if you can go down. The Town Center was number four, and then further down. There we go. And you can stop. Ninety-one percent of respondents agreed that preserving the historic quality of Town Center is important and said that historic structures are part of the distinctive character of Winchester. Ninety-one percent. I didn't, I have no idea who responded, but all sorts of people responded. And there's quite a variety of views in the responses to other questions. But this one was pretty dramatic. So I will say this, that as a member of this board, I think we've got, first of all, we've got our basic zoning that we're supposed to adhere to. And then we've got this waiver for the FAR. And then we've got this waiver for the parking, when we're at, we're struggling with parking as it is. And then there's this most fundamental and most important question about how do we preserve the historic quality of the Winchester, of Winchester's Town Center? So those are my thoughts for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Other members of the board?
Hi, this is Mr. Levitt, can I talk?
Not yet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, this is Heather, I'll go. Um, I don't feel as strongly as Maureen does about not touching the building. I, I think that, um, that we should let them do a few small units. I think that that is something we're not seeing happen around town, um, on other properties. So I think it's a unique opportunity. Um, but I agree that we would need to focus a little more on the design, maybe set it back, maybe change the materials, something so that it reads more secondary. But, um, I do like the idea of them putting small units there.
Um, thank you, Heather. Um, so I, I understand Maureen's passion for it. Um, we have always, um, sometimes disagreed. And so where I am coming from, because I have always believed that this property can take another story to it. Um, and when we go through, um, uh, the protection and preservation, I'm looking at preservation is more of the activity or process of keeping something valued alive, um, intact, um, and free from damage. I believe that this can take another story and will not damage, um, that. However, I do agree with the Historical Commission that currently where that face of the additional story lands, um, is intrusive, um, based on the perspectives and stuff. And, um, I would like to, I, and I think I'm leaning more, um, and I'm just gonna put my cards out, I, it's not even a card, because it's not a game, but more leaning towards where we bring in fifty-three G and we bring in a historical preservation specialist to help, um, work out these and bring it so it doesn't do those things, and it keeps the preservation of the building. Um, the other parts of it is certain parts of this facade, um, will be able to be restored. Um, during that, I would also like to make sure that they are restored appropriately. Um, and fifty-three G will also help make sure that, um, takes place. That's, but I do believe it needs to step back, um, and I do agree with John Clemson's, um, kind of summary. Um, uh, going from there, did anyone else want to speak before we move on to discussion on consultants? All right, since no board members wanting to speak, um.
Uh, sorry, Heather, I, I had muted myself, I apologize.
Oh, were you talking to yourself?
I do that often, this time I was hoping someone would respond.
Oh.
So, uh, I, I was, I was waiting to make sure everyone else had a chance to speak before I butted in again. Uh, so I, I am certainly concerned about the impact on the building. Um, I note that as, as Maureen pointed out in that earlier picture she showed, um, the building next to it, the Lyceum, did have other floors on it. And if that were to go ahead, it would definitely change the view shed. Um, but we are going to presumably allow that to go ahead, because there are, um, parts of the, of this particular, part of the zoning bylaws which give, allow that to happen. So, um, I think the view shed is something that will change over time. Certainly, looking the other way down the street, the view shed has changed over time. So this particular view doesn't look like what it did before. Um, and I acknowledge that we certainly want to keep the traditional look of the downtown and to preserve the architecture. But I think that it's possible to tastefully renew buildings, which is what I think this would do. So I agree with Heather Hanon that we do need smaller, less expensive units. Um, and I do believe, I do agree with the Historical Commission that this particular design does intrude too much on the facade. And so, and then I'm going to agree with you, Heather Unmering, that we should go with the fifty-three G and see if we can tune this design so that it is more appropriate to the setting. That's it.
Oh, it's Maureen, I have one more question. Um, this addition contemplates windows on the Lyceum, uh, block, uh, side. So what does that do to the rights, which are actually in the zoning, to the owner of the Lyceum Building?
Um, I thought they got rid of them.
Not what I saw.
Okay, then I am looking, so that's the s-
There you go.
Yep, I am, look, I was looking at the wrong one.
Pretty serious. It diminishes the value, literally financial value, for the Lyceum Building's owner.
Um, I think we would, um, actually need legal, um, to participate in this discussion exactly, um, to have a better understanding of what, um, each owner's rights are based on the the easements and various other issues that are with the deed to understand what that is.
Because you could certainly end up with an appeal from the owner abutting, who could point out that his property value has become reduced by the action of this board.
Unfortunately, Art is joining us, but he's not with us right now. Um, later, he's, I think he's coming in at nine o'clock, so he's not here to, for us to ask him to provide that, um, legal, um, information to us and do that research. Um, for the board's purpose at this point, because we are two minutes away from the eight-thirty, and I don't see us getting through the entire hearing at this time. Um, do we want to determine the need of consultants at this time? Or would you like to wait till we have legal review if those windows are, um, able to be proceeded, um, before we, based on their legal review on the zoning and the deeds of the properties?
I would like to go ahead with fifty-three G. I think these two things can be done in parallel.
Other members of the board, any opinions?
I don't understand the question about the windows. Can you explain again?
There are windows on the elevation that directly abuts the abutter. And, um, doing that, they have within their zoning rights, they have the ability to go up extra stories. Uh, as the zoning is written, as they are a historical building, that a story was lost due to fire. Um, and so it is unclear, um, how the windows impact the abutters and the abutters' ability to, to, um, work on the extra stories. And it's something that's outside of our expertise.
To maximize their profit, they were, uh, for the li- owner of the, on Lyceum Building, that they would have the windows and the opportunity- that they would have the windows and the opportunity to have vistas or views, whatever. Vista, I don't want to use that word because it confuses things. But that building with having the opportunity to build up another story and add windows as well, those would be much more valuable units. So by our board approving this project and putting windows out there, where the rights are compromised, basically, or the ability is compromised to throw a party wall against a building with these windows, that's a pretty, that's a pretty significant loss of value.
But isn't that a loss of value for both? I mean, this happens all the time in other cities where there's, you know, a couple feet between the windows.
I, this is definitely something I would prefer we let legal deal with. I, I have my own opinion about what's possible and not, but I have no idea if it's legal.
Is outside my area of expertise as well. So I, I would like to defer to legal on this. What about the 53G? Do we want to wait till we hear from legal? Or do we want a 53G, or where is the board stand with that? You gave your opinion. Did anyone else want to share?
Yes, I agree.
Maureen, did you have an opinion?
I think this project has a lot of issues. So the, I'm not, if it's going to go to 53G, there's, the question, the first question I have is what's, is a preservation planner as opposed to an architect? The architect works with the design. The preservation planner works with what's appropriate in your CBD. So we've got a question of who's going to be coming in.
I actually believe it needs to be a preservation architect.
So that's a different concept from what's, what you're doing in your CBD with your historic resources.
Could you please explain that a little better, Maureen? What do you see as the difference between a preservation architect? How does that not fit in with what we are supposed to do in the CBD?
One of the things that this board's missing is staff to support our historical commission and the planning board. When you go into communities that have staff, what they do is they make recommendations. They bring in the historic photographs, they bring in the, that we didn't see a B form, they bring in the history. And that's how they end up considering, it could be Somerville with a form-based code, it could be Lexington, but they identify what they're trying to protect. And in our, for example, in our master plan, in our master plan, there's this whole concept of balancing development with preservation. So striking this balance is something that we have not really wrestled with. So as a board, we're just kind of winging it as individuals. But there's a question of what's going to happen in the CBD? And what's going to happen, not just with this building, but where is this going with the rest of the town center? This is a huge question. And I think we ought to be wrestling with that one before we move into design, which is basically looking at moving the facade of that third story back. Do we put windows on the left side? You know, how much impact does it have? That's a different issue from the bigger question that I think this board has been basically punting on for an awfully long time.
But, but we have this project before us, Maureen, and we do need to, I mean, I don't disagree that we need a better idea of what's happening in the CBD.
Specifically with our historic resource.
But that's what's in front of us at the moment. What's in front of us is this individual project.
Well, there are ramifications from it. So we might start by asking a preservation planner, what are the ramifications? So we might do both.
I, I would have to, I don't know what's possible under 53G or not. I don't know if a preservation planner is, I don't know. Somebody needs to talk to legal and tell me and what it is that we can do with the 53G.
I mean, you can certainly, you can certainly use, use the money, use the professional, whatever, what have you, to get, in this, in this instance, it's to get the building or the addition to comply with the CBD guideline, the design guidelines. That is, that is what you're, you would be hiring anyone, whoever it might be.
Right, so the, the concept of a preservation planner, which I am not familiar with, but basing on Maureen's description, is not going to move this building into those guidelines. What it will do is tell us what's important about the building and its context. So that's one step removed. And considering the size of this project, I don't think that getting two separate consultants, one of which would be the preservation planner and the other one would be a preservation architect. I mean, this is a small project, and I don't know that we could levy two 53G consultants on it. If, if the board seems to think that it's possible to build something on top of this thing, then that would imply we would definitely want the preservation architect.
But the point is that we are without anyone guiding us and that more, the broader guidance as to what we do is relevant.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, Maureen. I just don't know how we meet all the needs on this one particular project, unless there is some individual who is capable of doing both. I mean, I just, these are four units. And if we're, and I'm concerned that the developer, I mean, there's a limit to how much we can ask developers to put forward on 53Gs. For larger developments, I have no qualms about asking for anything. I'm just concerned that this is a small project. And I don't know how to, you know, make everything fit together.
I, I personally think a preservation architect can, can take and do what needs to be done. But I understand where Maureen's coming from. However, when the CBD, when all this zoning was created, I was the chair of the historical commission, and I went through, and I disagree that when she broadly, and when you brought, Maureen, I'm disagree when you broadly did a stroke of, we're punting. Because when the planning board was going through the center business district, I went through pains, like painfully, went through every historical building in that downtown and looked at what can happen, how does that impact? What if the Lyceum goes up? What, what about the bank? What about, and I went and I did it for all of the buildings. And the planning board was doing their thing, but the historical commission at that time was doing their thing, and they were not punting the historical. There was, there was discussions, there was even sketches I had done. And I just, I, in this particular instance, I, when I did it and I looked at it and I looked at the next building going up, because that was something that the historical commission waited on. And when I looked at this building, this building can take another story and still preserve the downtown. It just has to be done and it has to be set back in a way that preserves the every, the historical fabric of that building and also does not overpower, because it is a short building. The two stories are short. So you can't put another story, it's just gonna, it's like a huge pushing down on it unless you set it back. And so I really do think that a historical architect would be able to do that and to deal with that. But also, if you have a very good historical architect, they actually know the context. And they aren't going to just do sketches that just show the, just show the elevation. They're going to show the whole street in elevation. And that's what historical architects do, right? They're looking at the whole street. They're not just closely, just looking at the one building. They're analyzing everything around it. And that's part of what architects do. If we were talking about a property that had to deal more with the footprint of the actual, an expansion of the footprint, I think, yes, that might be more. But I think for this particular architect, a preservation architect is the best way to go. If the board feels that setting it back is, will, will most likely meet the zoning. If they don't, if we don't feel that setting it back will meet the zoning, I think at this point, doing 53G is a lost cause.
So I think that, the point here is that you did it personally. It was an investment of your time. I respect that a lot. But you are not a preservation planner. You're an architect by, or what, by education, not by practice. But when you hire an architect, the architect's then being assigned to basically do the best with the assignment. It's called the program, or it's the, or it's the commission. It's to put an extra building on. Or in this case, what can be done with setting it back? But it's what can be done, but the assumption is that you're going to set it back. A preservation planner doesn't do that. The preservation planner identifies what's to be preserved and what has integrity and what, what's just, what has to stay as it is and what can, and your, the point that you were making, but where could you actually add extra stories? And I'll go back to the point that there's nothing like that on all of Leonard Street in Belmont. It's a pretty street. I'm standing there on Sunday, it's a beautiful day, and I'm with my husband, and we're saying, wow, this is, because I've been there before, but I'd never really looked at it that closely. And, you know, they lost the fire station, and now there's a restaurant in there, and it's intact. It's totally intact. They are not popping these hats on top of their buildings. That's because they've done the real planning job with the professionals. Same thing with Lexington. There's nothing stuck on top of any of their buildings. The ones that are new are built in their, you know, designed from top to bottom or bottom to top. They're built and designed so they have their own design. They're not just adding extra stories on them. So when you do that, you're really diminishing the, the beauty of the buildings we've got. And this is our iconic vista. This is our iconic street. And anything you put on top of that is going to be visible. You can set it back. Will I say that would be better? Yeah, it'd be better than what we just saw, which is terrible. But is, is it, is this desirable? No, it's go back to the master plan. We need to do a balance here. And we are doing lots of new construction in this CBD. We've got Waterfield, we've got Main Street, probably Converse. We've got the project outside of the, across from the grocery store that's under appeal, but it's been, construction everywhere.
Maureen, I didn't know I'd be damning John McConnell. Really interesting.
I'm sorry, with the board, I, I would like to respond. I think that there's at least three people on this board who feel that, that it's possible to put something on that building. And it's worth, I think it's worth going to see whether or not, or to hire someone who can go forward with that vision. I understand the arguments for historical preservation, but the whole vista will be totally changed if the Lyceum goes up by the number of stories it can. The whole vista has changed over the last hundred years by the construction of the Waterfield, or I'm sorry, the Sotheby's or whatever building it is next to the, to the Aborigona. I mean, this is an, we can freeze time at some point, but I don't know at which point we're going to start freezing time. It has changed. And I think that it is possible to tastefully put another story on there. And respectfully, I think that this board should move on a 53G historical architect, or preservation architect, and move forward.
I second that.
Can I, this is Cheryl Wolf. Sorry, can I just ask one question of Mr. Levitt and his group? Because I'm, I'm thinking, all of these comments are really teaching me about this process, but also about, you know, about this Mount Vernon Street. And I think that the Lyceum and the stepping down of this building towards the bank is really important. So setting back this third story is, it's in everyone's mind. I think it's really the right way to go in terms of the proportions, because the second floor is so short. It needs to come back, otherwise there's, it really does, as Heather said, smash the second floor into this really squatty little proportion. But I think more than ever, if the Lyceum is a cornerstone of this, our rotary, that's tall, and then we step down towards the bank. And when I think about pulling, pulling this back by five, 10 feet, how many units are you actually going to be able to get on the third floor that are of value? Because all of your infrastructure, your stairs, your elevator, all of that that you're building to get to the third floor is taking up quite a bit of the back half of the roof. And so I'm wondering, how many units would you actually end up with on the third floor if we pulled the front back by, say, 10 feet? It's almost the size of a bedroom, I would think. So it may not be even possible in a design effort to pull back the third floor and get something viable in terms of units up there. So my question is, do you think that that is something that your designer and your architect could even handle as a design challenge? Based on your investment in a, in a third floor?
Mr. Levitt, there's a question by one of the members. I think you heard it, so I don't need to repeat it. Are you able to answer that?
Yes, I believe John McConnell already stated at our last meeting that structurally you could not build this building by setting it back. You could not put a third floor in. John, are you still with us?
I am, I'm here. It's not that it's impossible. It, you incur immense cost if the structural work is not being done by the current exterior walls. We'd have to put in a whole system of beams and columns down through the whole building, through the basement, to carry the exterior wall of a reduced third floor. So that, it's a matter of cost. And Al can talk about, could he fit four units in a significantly reduced footprint there?
Yes, actually, it won't be possible. Because we're trying to respect also a partial setback between the building that we have neighbor the Winchester place. And so we have to keep that corridor clear. And also, we have the internal hallways, as the other members of the board mentioned, we have the lift, we have the two stairs and all the services room. And if we kick back 10 feet, basically, we are killing the project. I would like to mention something very interesting from one of the perspective about the elevations. And I don't want to go, again, with the historical commissions or directly to that subject. But I was concerned about one of the, the position where the beautiful photography was made. But also, I see, as in my human being perspective, possible to see how, you know, not just a historical perspective to the downtown or to the circle, to the rotary, but also that building at the 10 Converse place, which is completely flat, three-story, four-story building with all the antennas on top, which is actually, it doesn't belong at all with a conventional historical, I would say, a, a style of the downtown. So adding this design that John addressed and designed for the building, taking in consideration historical places and scale and colors and in, in that point, is actually bringing historical to the existing downtown more, more than what is existing in different buildings. Also, the flat one-story building where the insurance company is located just right in front in Mount Vernon, which is actually, it doesn't have any style. It's contemporary look, probably 60, probably 50, but it's actually, doesn't have any historical meaning. But I'm more curious about, you know, when you talk about the, that flat elevation, flat roof, square building, which is contemporary look from 70s probably, or 60s. And where the, as I said, in 10, I think it's Converse place or so, which is almost the same view, a little bit, you know, kickback. But, but back again to the elevation and the question about if we, if we are, is it possible to push back the, I will say, that proportion is actually very appealing because the building on the left side in, in Mount Vernon place is actually, it was originally two-story, three-story height and plus... height and plus the pitched roof. And so I believe if we, that building stayed there and didn't get any fire damage, this third story will be, it will looks like, you know, pretty well. So again, bring history to, 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 bring to today. I don't think it's, it's a totally fair situation. And I'm 100% with John when he said, push back the elevation, it will bring a lot of cost, but also reduce, will reduce dramatically the possibility to develop. I mean, four units, it won't be possible. I'm sorry.
All right, I'm gonna interrupt everyone. 50, we're 20 minutes past our time for our next hearing.
Apologies for that.
Nope, that's okay. To members of the board, at this point, I would like to actually continue the hearing. My thoughts are to not, at this point, if 53G for the pushback is not, if the applicant feels us not keep costs feasible, that we shouldn't ask for that at this point. But we need to continue the hearing at this point. So.
Do you have a date? I agree. Let's continue the hearing. We need a time certain. And we've got, probably we're into November. What's the, what's the date?
Brian, do you want to pull up the calendar? We have town meeting.
Probably two nights.
I think it's gonna go free.
We're meeting, town meeting is definitely going at least two nights. That's the 5th and the 9th, and possibly some other night this week. It's undetermined. We are meeting on the 16th and the 24th. As of right now, this is the only thing on our agenda, 6:54 Main, which we were gonna open at 9:00 and, and then continue it to 7:30 is what we told the audience members last time.
How long do we need to, I mean, that's a huge project. We obviously, we need time for it too. What would you suggest? Maybe Heather or as much as Brian?
So, I mean, I would suggest we, we do 90 minutes for, we give 90 minutes for this one and try to get a chunk done.
It won't get done probably in nine.
It won't get done, but get a chunk done. So then that leaves, you know, we could continue this to 9 o'clock.
So I'll make a decision to continue the hearing to Monday, November 16th at 9:00 PM.
Question to the board. We didn't have any availability on November, for the board to meet on November 2nd or 3rd. The 3rd is Election Day. So on the 2nd, by any chance?
I'm available.
And the reason I ask is going into town meeting, there's still quite a bit of work to be done. And I don't want to spend the day, the night of town meeting, the last hour just cramming it all in. And if that's the case, then we could add this on that date.
We, we could do a shortened meeting on, on Tuesday. Sorry, on Monday, the 2nd. We could, we could, that's possible if the other board members are willing.
Well, I'm, Jerius is willing.
Maureen?
I'm just wondering what's, it's the night before the election, but I think that's fine.
Heather Hannan?
Talking about the 2nd?
Yeah. And we don't have, we can do it later. We can start it later. We don't have to.
Is it a full meeting, like 7:30 to 10?
I would anticipate we would focus on this. And there might be a town meeting talking about our presentation to town meeting or open town meeting items in that meeting and maybe meeting minutes.
Okay.
Does that sound good to you? Is that okay?
Like 8:00 to 9:30?
Yeah. Would you rather start at 7:30 Heather or 8?
Nope, 8, 8's good.
Okay. And, and so it works for everyone?
No, we.
Cheryl?
So sorry. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. And with that in place, can we then, Maureen, do you want to keep your motion?
Sort of, it's really, are we now talking about 11 November 2nd, Monday, November 2nd, planning board? And I'm sort of losing, we're, are we actually going to meet though at 7:30? Just for my, sorry, I do want to understand what's going on more generally for our plans.
Right now, the hearing's gonna be at 8. We can, we can see what the agenda is and if we need to start at 7:30, but we'll put the hearing at 8.
Well, let me ask this, because I'd rather not be a long night. But can we do anything? Let's see, Heather Hannan's asking that we not start the meeting? I'm sorry, I just, I know we're trying to accommodate everybody, but I'd rather it not turn into a long night with everything else that week.
Well, that's why we're adding it, is to try to get some things out of the, just get them out of the.
Would it be better to continue the hearing at 7:30? So we're not up, because we're also doing town meeting stuff? I'm sorry, I'm just trying to understand.
Oh, well, the reason why it's 8 is depending on Heather's availability, but we can start at 7:30, go through some town meeting things, start the hearing and then come back to it if we need to.
No, my, I'm available. I was just asking for clarification on if it was a full meeting? If, if moving the hearing meant all of a sudden we're filling the time just because?
Right. I think it's better to start at 7:30.
All right. 7:30 with the aim to be done early or than our typical time. And when I do this agenda with, and Brian does it alongside me as well, we will keep that in mind to keep it a short meeting. So we can do, you still have a motion on the table, Maureen?
Right. So continue the hearing, the hearing at 7:30?
I would prefer it be 7:40, just so we can open, do updates if needed before. I don't like them starting right at 7:30.
Much more. Yeah. So continue the hearing of November 2nd at 7:40 PM. Okay. You've got it.
Okay.
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Roll call vote please.
Jerius, aye.
Hannan, aye.
Meister, aye.
Wolf, aye.
Von Mering, aye. Motion passes. We will be continuing the hearing on November 2nd at 7:40 PM for 1016 Mount Vernon Street. At this point, I'm going to actually turn the meeting over to Diab, and I'm going to come off the meeting. Brian, can you please contact me when you return back off of Lauren Court, please?
Will do.
Thank you. Diab, it's all yours. Thank you.
Okey dokey. Thank you much. Okay, so right now, we are reopening a hearing on the Warren Court subdivision. And my name is Diab Jerius. I am the vice chairing clerk. Chair Von Mering is recusing herself. She lives in the neighborhood. And I believe when we left off this hearing, let me get back, I believe we were at, we had heard from the public, we had heard from the applicant, and we were beginning our discussion. But I think that the applicant has provided some changes to their subdivision plan. And so if the board permits, I think we should probably hear from the applicant so they can describe what changes they've made.
So. That would be my recommendation as well.
So it's open to the board for discussion. If I don't hear anything, I'll just ask the applicant to come forward.
Hi, this, this is Adam Mishanda. I'm a.
Yep, hold on one second. I'm, I'm still waiting for the board to peep. And the board is not saying anything. So at this point, why don't we go ahead? Thank you. Mr. Mishanda, continue.
Sure. Thank you. So the two really big changes that were made from continuing from our discussion last meeting was, we eliminated Lot 4 and we incorporated it into Lot 3. So Lot 3, so now it's all Lot 3. There's no Lot 4 anymore. I know that was a concern of the boards. So we addressed that issue. You can see it's reflected on all the plans. Another big, another concern that we addressed was the landscaping plan. I know there was, we added a grass strip behind the curbing. That's gonna be Sheet 6. So what I added from last time is the grass strip behind the curbing. I added a grass strip and then I added a street tree on each lot, lots 2 and 3. So that was a little new landscaping that we added. And I also did narrow the driveways. I know that we wanted to reduce the width of the driveways. So I did reduce them. And I can't, they're two-car garages, so I can't reduce them all the way. So I had them reduced at the curb cut. And then, you know, they do flare out into the garage. But we did reduce them. I felt adequate to provide a street tree in there with all the utilities and everything taking place in the right of way. And the only other changes, we added the water valve and the easement for the water line, recommendation of Beth. So I add the water valve between lots 2 and 3 and the easement. And I added permanent monuments on the easement corners and on two of the lot corners on each of the lots. And I believe that's really all the changes, revisions that I made to the plans since our last meeting. Like I said, I know the two big issues were Lot 4, which we did eliminate. And then the landscaping, I felt we added some landscaping to the plans.
Okay. Thank you very much. Since, I think we're, we're gonna jump back in our procedures. We are back at number four. Brian, has, do you have any input on these changes from the town engineer? Have they met her? Is, is Beth still on?
Yes, she should be.
I'm here. Yep.
Yep. But we, we did just get these Beth, so I don't know if you had a chance to.
No, yeah, I think that looked fine. Our latest comment was related to that water gate, so I don't have any additional comments at this time. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank, thank. Yeah. So based upon the comments that we had received last about the soft cut line, the landscaping Lot 4 and street trees and a grass strip, that actually takes care of all of staff's issues at this time.
I recall seeing something from the design review committee about the working on the slope in Lot 3. Did I get that wrong?
No, I can, you can, hold on, I'll, I'll get that in a second.
Thank you.
Okay. So Lot 3 says the house, so the grading and retaining walls are shown to extend into the slope. They suggest that all the work to be done on the flat portion of the site rather than grade into the slope. And they recommended additional street trees in the right of way.
So Brian, could you flip back to that plot plan? And so we can take a look at what they're, the areas they're talking about? Okay, so there. So do we have an idea of how tall that wall is? I can't read on there.
Three, three feet.
Three feet. Okay.
Yep.
And are there constraints as to why you need to push it out that far? I, I'm asking questions, which I don't think I'm allowed to yet. Sorry. And Brian, the right of way, where would the trees go in the right of way?
So I, I, tell me if I'm wrong, Adam, they didn't have, they didn't have the, these three trees, correct, already in there? Or they did?
No, the, those trees I added.
Yep, that's what I thought. So the design review didn't see these trees that they've added since. So the only leftover question for them would, would be the steep nature of this grade. But I don't, it doesn't look like they're doing significant work here. Obviously, it's too, these lots are, they're not super tight, but they, you know, they do just kind of pencil out. They're obviously going pretty close to that, to the lot line. Oh, sorry, not to the lot line, to that wall. But this is all of their lot. And it doesn't look like there's significant earthwork. But we can, we can certainly.
I, I don't, I don't have any concern with the, with the impact to that small area of the slope they're proposing there.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that then.
Okay, so if that is, let's going back to our procedures, which is memos and letters from, have you had any further public input, Brian?
Other than the neighborhood generally wants to see this, see this occur. I've heard from several different owners, just with, with, I said, general agreement with that they should go forward and, and they think that this is a good idea.
Okay. So I think at this point, if I were to completely rewind the procedures or hearing procedures, we'd go and get public input. But I think we, we got a good sample of that last time. So I think we're now moving on to board discussion. So at this point, I think I, if the board would like to chime in and.
It's Maureen. I definitely do. But I'm, and Brian's great to move the notes to the screen. But I really do want to look at the plans again. Brian, are you, could you, I know, you're doing, you're doing an amazing job. It's a lot of flipping. Could we zoom in a little further? I want to look at the actual cul-de-sac and the right of way. I'm sorry, I used the word zoom. Zoom has multiple meanings in this day and age. So yeah, you're there. Can you pull it up a little more? Thank you. Because I couldn't even see it. Okay, here's the grass strip. So I'm trying to figure out, so I see the driveway curb cut. Man, okay. I'm having trouble reading this. So there's the, what are the trees? Usually you get a key and you get the trees. And I'm also trying to figure out whether between lots 3 and 2, whether there's a place for one more tree. It sure would be nice. So those are my questions. What are the trees? And it's not necessarily to the applicant, it's to Brian or Beth. Would there be a place for a tree between lots 2 and 3? And then, am I correct that I just see street trees to be planted? I don't see a tree specified. We better, or else we're gonna get little bitty trees. And I think we want shade trees.
So this is Beth. I can help answer that. This plan, like you said, is very confusing. But you can see the dashed line, maybe Brian, you can point it out where the, which are the boundaries of the easement, the easement. So the easement's 20 feet wide. And then you can see there's a water line that goes through the easement. There's water lines that come off of that, that service. The homes on Lot 2 and 3. And then there's a sewer line, excuse me, that goes into Lot 3. And then there's the driveways that go into the house at Lot 2 and Lot 3. So that area is fairly congested with those utilities. And I don't think, unless we expect some adverse impact to those utilities, that would make sense to add a tree in there.
What about, so generally, I would be looking for large quote unquote, street trees or shade trees. But could we even just get something like a dogwood? Just something small that isn't going to have a huge roots, that won't be creating problem for the utilities, but just something. And it might be two trees on one of them and one, no trees on, well, actually, I think we, anyway, you get the idea. Can we put something?
Yeah. So I mean, I, I wouldn't want anything planted in the water easement.
No, I agree.
We typically try to avoid planting anything in town easement.
Yeah.
There's a small space between the sewer that goes into Lot 3 and the edge of that water easement. I'm not a landscape architect and I wouldn't want to guess there's a tree species that could be fit in between those two, that space that would not impact utilities. That space that would not impact utilities.
So I would say yes. You know what? Can we do this? I don't know how close we are. Frankly, I can't tell where we are, but, um, to voting. But, uh, we, I know Julie Reiman Schneider is great about helping recommend, um, species, and I think that might be a way to go. So if we could get a small tree in there and then we really do want to specify a, um, the specific shade tree. There are different views. Sometimes people are, there is a perspective, which is they should actually be different anyway because of diseases. So, um, the others should be larger. So there's canopy over this. Remember it's a big paved cul-de-sac. So it would be nice to have trees that actually have branching over the cul-de-sac. So that, I think if we could ask, um, I, I like saying DRC. Some of the people do know trees there too, but I think that's the way to go. I do know, cause I've been, we've been looking, cause we have some wet land on our own property that, uh, for example, um, pin oaks take, uh, can go deep. Their roots go straight down. They're not spreading. I know, for example, you really don't want maples because they have relatively shallow roots. But anyway, there's, there's people, I know something, but, uh, DRC I think would be a great resource for this.
Okay, um, that's an excellent suggestion. Any other comments from, I'm sorry, um, are you, are you done with your comments, Maureen?
Hello?
Sorry, I'm being so good about muting myself, but, um, I was wondering, what's the width of the driveways? Now that they've been shrunk? And by the way, I expected that they would be kind of trumpet shaped. That's appropriate. But what's the width of the opening?
Adam, what's that? Uh, yeah, direct. Uh, sorry, go for it, Adam.
I actually, unfortunately I don't have my scale on me, but I have a scale on the plan, so. I don't know. Say maybe 20 feet or so I'd say we're looking at.
So that's what I was wondering about. In the world of new build, I know they're wide, but in, for the rest of us who live with old build, my road is 18 feet wide. 20 is really wide. I think these can be shrunk further.
So we generally allow, we generally allow 10 feet.
It's to the board.
We generally allow 10, 10 feet. And then if it's a duplex, we could do 20. I don't know why.
No, it, it's 20 feet for a single family and then for duplexes, it's 10.
10, oh, in either side. Yeah, yeah. Sorry about that. Okay. So they're at the, they're at the minimum then. Or we could, we could specify 20, which is the minimum, which is the, sorry, which is the, um.
Maximum.
A maximum, sorry.
Uh, you know, considering the amount of pavement there is in this cul-de-sac, I, I would agree with Maureen that we could, can we shrink it more? Just to reduce the, the effect of all of that asphalt. And that's a question. I, I, I don't know what's a reasonable width that you need in order to efficiently use or effectively use what looks like a two guard garage.
Well, it's just the opening. So, um, like Maureen had said, it would be a trump, you know, to fan out or fan in rather.
Would, would 12 feet or 10 feet accommodate that use? Cause you do actually have to.
Yes, a car can definitely go in at 10 feet. That's why we have that 10, we have a 10 foot. Uh, if you have a duplex, you can have two driveways at 10 foot, 10 foot wide each.
So I think the concern with shrinking it all the way to 10 feet at the driveway opening is just making sure that as it opens up into the driveway, um, there's sufficient room for cars to navigate without it being really awkward. But I would leave it to the engineer to figure out, or, you know, reasonable width that they could make the curb cuts. And I think you're concerned less about just what the curb cut width is, but what the overall driveway width is as it goes up to the garage. So that's really something the, um, applicants, engineer would need to kind of look at, um, from a design perspective.
Yeah, so I would, I would recommend that we, that the, the curb cut be narrowed as much as possible to accommodate reasonable traffic. And I don't know what that number is. And that, that's where, um.
How about 18 feet, Mr. Chairman?
I'll jump in and say, that's the size of my road. It's a two-way street. You can get a school bus down it. Uh, I think we can do less. Again, it's, we're doing this for the purpose of the residents. They don't live there. The houses haven't been built, but it'll be a lot nicer. And not to mention the natural environment. There's more perk when you've got, not, when you're not paving it over. It's just, it's hot in the summer. Summers are getting longer and hotter. Just let's shrink the pavement.
Yeah, I was considering something or more around 12 or feet. Um, I was going to start on that.
Let's aim for that.
No, that doesn't work.
Okay, well, well, um. I, I, like I said, I, I don't have enough knowledge to go back and forth with you folks this evening. And I don't know if the rest, so this is something that maybe, um, is this something Beth that you can work on? I don't want to put you on the spot.
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's really, it's not really something I can, you know, tell them specifically how to do it. There's so much room between where the driveway opening is at the street and the garage. You know, it, you know, if you want it to be 12 feet, then they'll make it open up to the garage. You know, at 12 feet, it'll just be very narrow at the curb cut. So I, you know, I don't think there's a lot of kind of back and forth on my part to be had in the conversation.
Okay, so, so does the rest of the board have an opinion on how this can be done? Because I, you know, I, I, I can put little cars down on this road and play with them myself. But I don't know that that actually, um, is the best way to do it.
I, I think just looking at the plan and Brian, I don't know if you could bring it back up. The driveway would seem smaller than 20 feet to me because you do have, um, the road is 20 feet, right?
Uh, it's 27 foot wide pavement. Yeah. This diagram is so complicated, I can't actually tell where the pavement starts and ends.
Yeah. So I mean, the double, um, the double kind of lines on either side is the curb, which seems a lot wider to me than those driveway openings. Um, but it's hard to tell. Maybe the one for lot one could be reduced a little bit at the, at the opening.
Well, I would suggest we go for 12 feet. And if, if the proponent can show that 12 feet doesn't work, then coming up with the minimum that would work, because this is out of my area of expertise. But I, I'm, I recognize there are physical constraints as to you can't have two objects at the same place at the same time.
Okay, um, I don't know if that's trying to fashion into a condition or if it's actually giving them a ta, a task and we're continuing them.
I, I, I don't know. I don't know. I think it could be a condition, but a condition actually, actually have, excuse me, a condition should have a real number on it. So it may be a continuation.
Well, it could be, we've done in the past where, you know, that's why I put like to the satisfaction of, you know, some, you know, person planning, engineering, planning and engineering or something. So something like that is possible. But, um, if you're saying that you want 12, that's different. If you're saying you want, you know. So just trying to figure out, when you just say the narrowest possible within reason, um, the thing is we could, we could, we could condition this where it can get further narrowed without. I mean, if this is the only thing, right?
Yeah, I don't want to, if this is the only thing, I don't want to hold up the thing.
There's, there's another condition that I was gonna, that, um, that I was going, that I recommended on the last time, which was, um, based upon neighbor feedback. But I'll get to that afterwards. But as of right now, we have some comments or potential conditions on the trees, a potential condition on the curb cut, um, that we need to finish. And then this third one that I was thinking, that obviously all of the standard conditions that we put on all of our subdivisions.
I have a clarifying question. Do we not have a minimum? We only have a maximum?
That is correct. Um, the thing is a, a five, uh, what would be considered? So for, for driveways, there's, there's, I don't believe there is a state minimum only for what were our fire lanes. And driveways are not considered fire lanes. So I don't even think there's a statewide minimum for a curb cutter for a driveway.
Well, I mean, for safety, I would imagine it's, it's either eight or 10 feet.
Generally, generally that's a travel lane. So that makes sense.
Yeah, but you want to be able to open your doors. So 10 feet would be my recommended minimum. That's reasonable.
Chairman?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think our preference would be to, um, you know, work with the town engineer and the planner and try to come up with a a width that works for, for everybody.
Yeah, I agree. Brian, you had some good language there that you said to be narrow further to the satisfaction of the planner and the town engineer. Yep, that works. And you know where we're coming from. And then I, anything, any other comments from the board? And I'm guessing that no one has any more comments. And Brian, your, all of your standard conditions?
I have one more comment.
Okay, please go ahead.
Are we assuming that all of these are garages that face the street? You know, because that's something that we don't like to encourage either.
Well, the plans cert, certainly indicate that they are facing the street. And I think the, the, the layout of the lots would preclude. I mean, certainly the problem with all of the easements means you can't really plunk them. Uh, I, I think that if you were to try to move these to the side, it might be difficult on the size of these lots. But do you have a, do you have a, uh, another view on that?
Uh, I'm not looking at it right now, but, um, since it's not on the screen anymore.
Yep, it's up now.
Yeah, I can't really tell how wide. You can't, I mean, we're not seeing the floor plans, but I just thought if we're talking about driveways, we should at least be consistent in our position that we prefer the garages to be on the side of.
It's, it is not, uh, I mean, it's obviously possible, but it's not possible under this. But at, at, at the same time in subdivision, we typically can't dictate such things.
I think it would be very challenging with the lot width that we have here to be able to accommodate a driveway and, uh, garages on the side of the house. There's just no way that they would be able.
You'd share a driveway between lots.
A driveway in between to access garages on the side of the property, except for maybe lot three, which would require a significant filling of that slope area. And I agree with Brian. I think, you know, subdivision is not necessarily, um, certainly within the board's right to discuss, but the, you know, it's really dictating the layout of the road and the locks themselves.
Yeah. Okay, um, Cheryl, did you have any comments?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Okay, um, and are those? How many more do you have to type in, Brian?
I think this was the last one that I wanted to make sure got on there. Cause all of the other conditions that the butters were asking for already made it on the plans. So this was, this was the last condition that was requested. I don't believe we've heard a response from the applicant of their willingness. But I mean, I think it's kind of a, just kind of a standard good gesture. But I, 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 you know, that's, that's, that's all I had.
Can you, can you? Can you describe what number four means?
Sorry, that's our stand, we, we have a list of standard subdivision, uh, conditions that are, uh, in our subdivision rules and regs that go into all decisions.
Okay. And the, the only thing that I want to make sure of is that we have been assured that there will be no access to the site from lock one during demolition and construction. Is that correct?
Uh, they have.
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah. So they've changed that on the plans to show that it's not a construction uh, entrance or exit, but we can certainly memorialize that.
All right, just, just so that the neighbors, I, 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 I trust that the, uh, the proponents will follow, will keep to their word. But so that the neighbors feel secure, let's make sure it's in there. And, um, construction and does, does destruction include disconstruction and demolition or? Do we? Thank you. Okay, um, if that is, those are all the conditions and the board is ready to vote. Well, let's go on. So we have, uh, step nine of our procedures is to determine the need for consultants. Does anyone on the board feel the need to, uh, employ a 40, 53G consultant for this project?
I assume that Beth's happy with the engineering. That's about it.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, I'm, I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Heather or Cheryl?
No, no comment.
Excellent. And any further questions of the applicant?
No.
Okay, I'm going to then, uh, I think we can move on to, we don't need to continue the hearing. I, I'm pretty sure that's number 11, number 12. Closing of public comment period. So I need a motion to move that we close the public comment here in a second and then we will vote on that. So can I have a move, a motion, please?
I'll move to close the public comment period.
And a second.
I second that.
Okay, Cheryl seconds. And can I have a voice call vote, please?
Danan, aye.
Meister, aye.
Wolf, aye.
And Jarius, aye. Okay. At this point, we move into the deliberation phase. And, um, do we need to deliberate?
Not me.
No.
I'm all set. Anyone else?
All set.
Okay, um, and now we vote. So, uh, we have a choice of three votes or three different things we can do. We can vote to approve the project with or without conditions, deny the project with or without prejudice, accept with or without prejudice, the applicant's offer to withdraw if proffered. Um, I'm going to as, assume that we will be voting to approve the project with conditions um, as listed by the town planner on the screen in front of us.
Well, I think you can't move it, but I'll make that motion.
Yes, please. I was just framing it. Okay, do we have a second?
Yep.
And can we have a roll call vote?
Uh, Meister, aye.
Wolf, aye. Sorry.
And Jarius, aye. I think we're 401. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just to follow up, um, and I, Brian, I don't like to talk while you're typing. But so will you send this over to the designer review committee? I think they're meeting at the end of the month, um, to, is it possible? Yeah, I think they are. So we can get their, oh man, when are they meeting? Yeah, I think they're meeting, uh, November or October 28th. So that's pretty good timing. So we should be able to get some people. Really, you could send it right away.
Okey dokey, Brian.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna text Heather right now.
Yes, please, because we are half hour behind at the moment.
Yep.
So, uh, thank everyone who stuck around for this one. And, uh, when the chair returns, it's her gavel.
I'm gonna get the agenda back up. I just texted her. She should be up in just a moment.
So while we're waiting, can I have a question? But I, I, I want to get cut off right away, but I know Art is here. We've had this small change to our subdivision regs that I keep forgetting what it is, but we didn't get it done. And I'd really like to get it done. And Art suggested it. Art, are you there listening? Well, maybe not. Um, Brian, do you remember what it was?
Well, Art is definitely there.
Um, I do, I do remember what it was. I don't remember the exact section, but I remember what it was, which is basically, uh, it had to do with the timing of the release of the lots and the roads. And it was, it was something that was in our regs that, um, basically created what we now refer to as the Greek streets situation where there's a, there's a difference between the lots and, uh, the owner, uh, and the timing of those and when they get transferred over. Is that right, Art?
Sorry, I'm here. I didn't hear, I didn't hear Maureen's lead in.
It had to, it had to do with, um, we had some subdivision regs. I believe it was last year that you had mentioned that there was something in our, in our subdivision regulations that basically promotes or creates the Greek streets, lots, roads, uh, situation.
Yeah, I don't remember the section of the regs, but it was something that came up, uh, on Abbey Road where the regulations say that the developers shall not transfer the road with the lots. And that, I, that seemed to directly create the Greek street situation.
Thank you. So Maureen, that was, we can get the section, but that's what it was.
Could we, since we're all together, um, ask Art to, or you to run it to Art, but somebody draft something and when we schedule a meeting like after town meeting, just vote it because it's not that hard to do. This isn't, it should be something we should get done.
Yeah, I think it's just a taking out of a, of a, of a regulation, meaning deletion of a regulation. Uh, but yes, yes. Yes, I can.
Um, I'm back. Is it appropriate for me to be back? Are we done?
Yes, we are.
Um, okay, so let's move on to six fifty four Main Street. Uh, we're thirty minutes behind schedule. Um, I am going to call the hearing um, uh, to order. Um, uh, all those who are present, um, you don't need to sign in because we have all your names from, um, those who um, are participants through Zoom. And so your name will be recorded. Um, and just for another reminder to all those who have joined us and those are who are still with us from the beginning of our meeting and from the other hearings, um, a reminder that you are being recorded. Um, and also, uh, the recording will be available on windcam.org, but also is currently being broadcasted um, through, uh, their stations. Uh, from there, um, we are going to, um, our main goal for today is to go over, um, the, um, the consultants proposal that came before us. That is the only reason, uh, for today that we are meeting and we were going to continue thereafter to another time certain. Uh, but we wanted to make sure that we, um, kept going forward with the schedule. Um, and at that time, uh, the next time is when we plan to, uh, go through with all of the, uh, public comment period, the board's discussion, um, and, uh, the next steps of our hearing process. So today we're just really looking at um, the proposals for, uh, the consultants and, um, going from there. So it should be very quick. Um, uh, just so everyone knows, I'm just going to reintroduce. Um, I am Heather Von Mary. I'm chair of the planning board. Um, and members of the planning board, can you please introduce yourselves?
Oh, Maureen Meister.
Heather, Hannon.
Do you have Jarius?
Earl Wolf.
Um, and Brian, just real quickly, before we proceed to tool, can you bring up the public hearing notice?
Um, just
the legal notice record before.
This, um, we certainly can, we certainly can do that. We don't need to go through each of the, we don't need to open the hearing each time, but yeah, um, I, I can get the public notice.
Oh, we need to continue it, don't we?
Well, we, 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 it was continued to tonight. We're just opening it, uh, but we don't need to go through the same process.
No, I was just going to read the public hearing, the notice.
Um, I, I think in the, I, I don't have that in front of me, but in the interest of time, this does explain the project, which, um, talks about six fifty more, six fifty four Main Street and sixty three Vine. Um, it says the existing, uh, the existing site is True Value Hardware and it's, uh, trying to create thirty six units in two ground floor. Uh, spaces will remain in order to have a total of forty one parking spaces. Um, what was done or what was requested was that, um, we get a scope and a, um, a fee for the traffic impact and access study that was prepared by the proponents, um, traffic engineer, Howard Stein Hudson. Um, so the goal of the review is to, um, is meet the development, that meets the goals and needs of the town of Winchester is prepared according to the industry and as well as the town of Winchester by law standard. So they go through their kind of standard, uh, peer review, which they review the study. They go, um, they actually go to the site. Uh, they were, they review the traffic of, uh, cycling and vehicles. Um, and then evaluate the traffic data that they, that they had taken from the three study intersections. Um, look at the traffic growth assumptions over time, as well as any crash data and site distance calculations, um, from the driveway. So they're looking at access in, in and out of that site for safety. Um, they're looking at trip generation, um, and then, um, impacts with any other additional potential traffic conditions. So this is, um, kind of the standard peer review. Um, and when I say standard, not that tool ever gives us anything standard. Um, we've been very impressed with them so far. Um, but, um, this is what is, uh, would be considered a, a routine, uh, or peer, peer review study for, for traffic and impacts related to traffic and parking.
Uh, the parking part.
Um,
traffic.
Um, so uh, it's talking about their properness and transportation mitigations measured within the traffic study area. Um, in terms of, so when you say it doesn't talk about parking, are you talking about the ancillary parking study that you're talking, that you were mentioned previously or you're?
Well, I thought it was interesting. There are two, I guess, two different aspects of this one. There's not, we're now looking at something completely different, um, which is parking through a lift. So what would be reasonably expected when you've got a parking garage with a lift? And then the other question is, yes, what happens with the additional parking? You're calling it ancillary. That's okay. But what's the, um, most of this thing is standard, like you're building a big project out, God knows where, um, I don't know, off Washington Street, like Winchester Hospital. And you're trying to see what the impact of traffic is. This isn't that big. They're only thirty some units. The traffic is not my real concern. It's like we're spending their money admittedly, but I'm respectful on traffic when the issue is parking. So it just feels like we're going through the motions and this does look like a standard, um, response, frankly. And fine, but, and I think they can deliver what we want, but do it for me.
So I, I don't know what else we would need other than them reviewing the proposed vehicular and bicycle parking supply associated with redevelopment. I mean, that's what we're asking them to do.
Okay, no, I didn't see it. So.
I'm sorry, but that is all they say. You're right. I mean, um, that is all they say about it, but I, I was figuring that this covers what we, what we would need.
Uh, Brian, was there a second? Uh, was this the only person that you reached out to or is there another one?
Uh, no, typically for, um, projects that, um, the town needs, um, traffic, uh, guidance and expertise on, we have been using tool and have, uh, like I said, have been happy with their work.
Okay, yeah, I just.
Um, so.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in, Maureen. Um, so section seven point three point sixteen point eight is really the crux of where Maureen's going. And I think I looked at the proposals from the applicant and I do believe that it's missing components of this. Um, the transportation demand management plan, including parking management policy. Um, um, so like the, the management of the parking, we don't have that. Uh, but then it also goes into, um, drop offs aren't identified in the plan, at least that I could see, um, on the scale drawings I have. That's really where I think Maureen is going. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but.
You can do it. You're doing really well.
I really think that's where, um, that, uh, tool, um, just reviewing what's provided. I think they also need to make sure that they're analyzing this section and making sure that the information, if it's not there, that it, we get it.
Uh, there's no, so that is what we're paying them for. That's in the scope of, of making sure that it complies with not only industry standard, but also the Winchester zoning by law. So.
Could we actually call out, Heather, you're great. Um, could we call out seven point three point sixteen point eight? Because that's, I, I was just flipping my print version of the zoning by law open. And that's exactly the right area. Um, and frankly, I don't know how to pull this back, but the big issues for this neighborhood will be, I do believe, uh, circulation, sight lines for getting out, you know, turning left and right, all of that is good. But, um, the impacts on the, um, I, I, well, it's all there. Heather just read it. I won't repeat it. But the, um, I mean, identifying impacted intersections, that's absolutely right. That's a big one. Um, but the amount of traffic, I don't know, it's, it's on Main Street. Most of that just runs by the building. I, I just don't want to waste a lot of effort on money on that when we've got, the one thing that could be done and somewhere or not, they need some guidance. They don't know, but we do. Uh, well, for example, just the pictures that John Stevens took. All you'd have to do, and I know this was done when we did a big parking plan for the town, is just look at the license plates and see if they're actually the residents putting their cars out on the street during the day. We did that once before, you know, it's not that hard.
Um, so I'd also like to point out that in their proposal, just because I'm a stickler for detail on proposals. They're calling out the bylaws. Um, they also need, they also need to include the zoning bylaws.
Yes, exactly.
In there, but I specifically at seven point three point sixteen point eight. Um,
I have that noted that I can get into the scope.
I don't think it's going to affect their price. I just think that, um, this, that they need to be brought. And that's what we're really looking for uh, in terms of, uh, traffic, uh, the peer review. Um, there's other components obviously throughout the zoning that talks about, um, movement around the site, um, and vehicle parking and stuff, um, as well. But that is where I saw some gaps in what I was reading as the was provided.
I could certainly add those, um, sections basically right here when it's talking about the Chester zoning bylaw, code of bylaws, standards and other applicable, applicable sections, including but not limited to. And I'll, I will name the sections that we just talked about.
Okay. And then, um, the other question I had for, um, Beth, because I know she deals with this a lot, is this a fair and reasonable cost from her perspective for this scope?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's in line with what we've seen for other peer reviews.
Okay, thank you. Um, there's also more on seven point three point seventeen point three point four, there's parking, more talking about parking and. Um, uh, I'm going to stop flipping through my zoning because we can always pull out the, all the specific areas as well. Um, uh, the other question I had for you, because we just got this, so we didn't, we got it at like five o'clock this evening. Is there is no line item on here for a definitive hourly cost if something extra comes in? And it's not outlined. So if, you know, they're saying only so many visits and so many things that, uh, is that not typical to see in the, in these to see actually their hourly rate if there is additional scope added? That that's agreed on.
Yeah, that's, that's not typical of what we see in peer review proposals. Um, if we do need to add scope, we'll go back to them with a request and then we would have to get another, um, they, a check from the developer because the developer is only going to give us an amount, um, that covers the cost of the peer review scope. And if it's going to go beyond that, then it would need to come back to the board to increase that amount. And then the developer would have to provide that additional money to fund it.
Yep, um, okay. And we have you to confirm that that price is fair and reasonable as well.
Yep.
Um, so, all right, I'm, I'm more comfortable not having it included in the proposal. Uh, any members of the board have any more questions?
Can we move it to approve this proposal?
I'm happy to have it moved. Is there a second?
All right, second.
Do you want to have discussion?
All set. No discussion.
All right, uh, roll call vote, please.
Jarius, aye.
Meister, aye.
Wolf, aye.
Heather, can I suggest we go, we have some kind of alphabetical order?
Sure.
Or Heather, you could just call our names out.
Yeah, I think it's easier if Heather calls everyone's name and then she doesn't have to remember.
I could do that. I can call your names.
Actually, alphabetical might be faster. Poor Heather needs a break. I can do alphabetical. Let Heather, um, just take a breath.
Uh, Von Mary, aye, as I'm in the end of the alphabet. Motion passes. Um, uh, can we have, uh, I would like to entertain a motion to continue to a date certain.
So moved.
Well, now we need the date.
Need the date and the time.
Oh, sorry.
That's the trick.
So I, um, this is Beth. I'll just jump in. Uh, hopefully the conservation commission tonight is approving the, um, peer review scope for the flooding, um, aspect of the project. And I would expect that would take at least, you know, three plus weeks for the peer reviewers to take a look at that and be able to return something. So just want you to consider that as you're thinking about scheduling your next hearing so that we give our peer reviewers enough time to, um, come back with something that the board will have sufficient time to review before a meeting, um, and have a, you know, a good discussion about.
Okay, thank you.
So we don't have a date yet. What's the idea of, uh, we have?
Brian has it. I believe it is.
The sixteenth?
The sixteenth.
Yep.
Of November.
Okay, do you want to do seven thirty or seven forty? I like that idea of giving some time for some updates.
I'm comfortable with that, Brian?
Sounds good.
Brian, did you say that was good?
Yes.
Okay, um, so, uh, do you have, is your motion or Maureen?
Yeah, so let me move that we postpone. We continue.
Continue.
Continue to the time certain, which is November, the fifteenth at seven forty.
No, it's the sixteenth.
The sixteenth, I'm just reading with rights typing. That's seven forty P M.
Second.
Um, all those in favor?
Hannon, go, you're first.
Hannon, aye.
Jarius, aye, I can't.
Meister, aye.
I, so I, Wolf.
I usually go, the chair usually goes last, just.
There we go. That's what I was thinking. Wolf, aye.
Von Mary, aye, motion passes. We will continue to November sixteenth at seven forty P M.
And at that time, will we know if we're, um, hiring for a designer view and maybe a preservation architect, um, under our authority?
Uh, hopefully, Brian?
So, um, that vote has already occurred in terms of.
You'll have the information at that time.
Yeah, no, I, I, I will have that bef- before and that work, I mean, that work has already been authorized, but the scope, the scope, the scope has not been approved, but I think we've already been said, go hire Dennis. And in addition, a preservation architect is what I was, that would either work with or under.
Right, right.
All right, we've closed the hearing, so I'm going to keep moving forward. That's for six fifty-four Main Street is what is continued. So going to the Z B A special permits. We have petition number three nine one four, one thirty-eight Forest Street.
Can we try to figure out how to move these quickly with the presentations or some of them may not need much? These are after all recommendations.
Yeah, I think unless there are applicants here to present, you know, this is not typically. Something that we, you know, take. You know, we don't go through the same hearing procedures that we just reviewed in terms of having. These are our recommendations to the zoning board. And usually what we've done in the past. Is we have any type of, we have any other conditions, I'm sorry, we have any other boards or committees that have. Given us their recommendations, we, we say those. So that's what I envisioned.
I, due to time and everything going on. And we're just, we're just advisory at this point for the Z B A. I. I think if we have questions, we can ask. I mean, we have all the drawing sets. They're, they're pretty intense on some of them. And I, I think we go for it on our part. But.
Can we just start? I mean, we.
I'll go, I'll go. So petition thirty-nine fourteen, this is one thirty-eight Forest Street. So this is site plan review because the house is over five thousand square feet. As well as that they're changing the slope of the existing grade by more than six percent of an area more than five hundred square feet. This is properties located in a very large lot in R D B ten. And, and contains thirty thousand square feet. So it's triple lot. So the historical commission voted unanimously no adverse impact on a historic resource at their meeting on September twenty-eighth. But it, it should be noted that this house that was previously there. Was deemed historically significant back in twenty eighteen and a twelve month delay was imposed on the demolition. That twelve month period has expired and the delay has been lifted and they can therefore proceed. The design review, sorry, committee voted unanimously unfavorable for this petition based on the following. And it, it went through the site plan review and special permit criteria. Even though, like I said here, that only the site plan review should have been used. So I'm just gonna highlight that is that the size of the building is unreasonable departure from the scale of surrounding neighborhood. And it's an excessive quantity of fill required to achieve the large degree of change from the existing grave. So, again, this entails that a demolition of a historically significant structure. I thought that there was a very robust landscaping plan provided, but there, there are not only invasive tree species listed. There's a significant amount of grading on this site with very large retaining walls. Several of them over six feet. The house, I said, does look attractive from the street, but I find the plan to be too extensive for the site. And request that the applicant reduce the scale of the building, preserve more mature trees. There's about thirty-seven. Thirty-seven trees within the setbacks that are being destroyed as a result of this petition. And try to minimize the amount of retaining walls. I recommended unfavorable action with regards to this petition. Mainly based upon the unreasonable departure of character and scale and the cut and fill that was. The excessive amount of cut and fill and therefore mature tree loss and excessive retaining walls. That is all I had for this petition.
Thank you, Brian. Members of the planning board?
Can I ask one quick question? Which of the species was invasive? Do you recall?
I think it was a Japanese maple.
Japanese maple is considered invasive. Okay, thank you.
I mean, yeah, sorry.
No, that's just all I needed to know because I didn't recognize that. I just had one further comment. I, I concur with all of Brian's findings. I also want to note that not only were the retaining walls tall, they actually put fences on top of them. So that the rear retaining wall, which is ten feet tall, has a four foot fence on top. So that's a fourteen foot structure. And I know the board has been concerned before about putting fences on top of retaining walls. And so I find that that's really, everything Brian said, I agree with.
Other members?
Unfavorable action.
Yep. And I will ask clerk, I'll work with Brian to write this up for the Z B A.
One thing to help with that, that hasn't been said, and it said that it was with this. The histor, not the historical, but the R D, D R C, I'm getting tired. That the building forms are unreasonable departure. If you actually go down forests. They're pretty consistently masked all the way down that street. And this would just be huge in comparison to all those houses on the street. And so I just, we didn't, it doesn't really explain why. The D R C is coming and saying that and why Brian is saying that and why we're saying that. So I just want to make sure that it's clear. That if you look and you drive down the street, you see all these great. Average sized houses and this would be just way out of relationship to what's around it. So I just wanted to point that out because it wasn't discussed, it's just stated. And I wanted to give some more information about why it's being stated. Brian's bringing it up right now so everyone can see what we're talking about. And so what's being proposed is a.
It's a dramatic change.
It's a five thousand square foot home. So that's where this is coming from. Shall we move?
Well, I'll make a motion to recommend unfavorable action.
Did you want to put conditions on that or just leave it as is?
I guess we could adopt Brian's comments.
Okay. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Discussion? Please vote.
Heather, Hannah, you start.
Oh, I have something quick to say. I don't want to delay things, but. If I was the person, I would want to understand what could. Like what would work? I'm just wondering if we need to be a little more specific about the scale. Or like the length of the front facade or something that will give them direction.
I actually, I couldn't do that right now, Heather, because there are actually elevations. There's no scale on there. There's no dimensions of the actual width of that house. I mean, I can, I can eye it by looking at the size of the garage doors to then figure it out from there. But I, I couldn't actually even tell you how, what the percentage of that facade is compared to what. Is on that street because the drawings don't have that dimension.
The floor plans do.
True. I'd go hunt for it.
I'm, I'm going to, Heather, I love your interest. I'm sympathetic, but the, the Z B A is going to handle it. And I really do think we're.
Well, I mean, we could.
Play it out here.
We could simply say, look at the scale of the other houses in the neighborhood and that would be appropriate.
Um, it's, yeah, so the footprint is seventy-eight feet long. Like fifty feet. And a lot of those are coming in closer, I'd say, to, just by scaling in from the views are coming in closer to forty. But I don't know if that helps any in our memo or anything.
I, I, if we want to, I can, I can. Put something down like that. I'll work with Brian to include language about appropriate scale. If that's okay with the board?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the word isn't appropriate. I think it's consistent.
Thank you, thank you.
Contextual scale, something like that.
Consistent and contextual, consistent. Okay.
So that would just go in the memo that Diab creates on behalf of the, that we.
Well, Brian and I will create.
Yeah.
Yep, on our behalf. And we give you that authority as our.
Yep.
Vice Chair and Secretary. So.
This is Maureen's motion.
Uh, but it's, I know, but I don't think we need to include it into the motion.
I agree.
Since we give Diab the authority to write on our behalf with our decision. So Heather, do you want to vote? Make your.
Hannah, aye.
Jurious, can't remember the alphabet. Aye.
Meister, aye.
Wolf, aye.
Von Mary, aye. Motion passes for unfavorable recommendation for one thirty-eight Forest Street. One Abbey Road, petition number three nine one five. Go ahead, Brian.
All right, I'm gonna get this up. So three nine one five. So this petitioner is seeking a dimensional variance. From section four, the zoning bylaw to construct a house that is located closer to the front property line than permitted as of right. Properties located on, on R D B. Ten and contains just over ten thousand square feet. The historical commission voted unanimously no adverse impact on historic resource. Because due to no resources in the area and the D R C voted unanimously unfavorable because. Taken directly from them, they say new construction projects within a newly permitted and constructed subdivision should be able to conform to dimensional zoning requirements. So there's obviously nothing there existing right now. This lot, these lots, or this lot in particular, lot one, was created through a subdivision approval with the planning board. A land transfer through town meeting and the development agreement with the select board. The condition that the applicant go through the Z B A for the front setback encroachment was placed on the development agreement with the select board, not the planning board subdivision approval. That the applicant stated. The subdivision doesn't typically contemplate size and location of the proposed house, other than drainage calculations and the placement of underground utilities and other easements. Even though footprints were shown on those plans submitted. Using the variance process to potentially undo or alter anything in the subdivision should not occur. Variances are only awarded for petitions that fit inside the bounds of M G L forty A section ten. Variances. Variances may only be approved, this is taken directly from M G L. When S P G A finds that the Owen circumstances to the relief sought must relate to soil, topography, or shape of such land or structures involved. There have been many emails from the butters that have been sent to the planning board relating to the loss of trees in the rear of the lot. And the significantly larger footprint and therefore closer to the rear property line than anticipated. The variance process before us, however, cannot contemplate such issues. The front setback relief sought is unrelated to the soil or the topography or the shape of the lot, or shape of the land or structures on the site. The relief is being sought due to a development agreement. That relates to moving the houses away from the rear lot line in order to have larger separation between houses. The application therefore does not meet the standards for awarding a variance and I recommend unfavorable action with regards to this petition. I am aware that the applicant is here, by the way, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Brian. Members of the planning board?
So if I get this straight. Then this language that was in the development agreement is essentially unusable. Because there is no way to use that. You can't get a variance for what they're asking for. So the language in the development agreement is just null and void. Is that, is that correct?
No, 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 that, that is not, that is incorrect. The, the language of the development agreement states that the applicant must apply to the Z B A for relief. The applicant is fulfilling that obligation that's in the development agreement.
Right, but they could never get a variance because there's nothing they can do which would fall, which would get them a variance. I guess that's what I'm saying.
Yes, I agree. I agree that the, that the select board or anybody cannot force the Z B A to grant a variance. They can only, well, they can only do this, but this was done, this was put in the development agreement. Not because necessarily the select board wanted to do that, but this was at, this was at a, at a hearing that they, that the select board had had. And it was put on the development agreement based upon public feedback.
Okay, I'm just, all I'm saying is that if you can't get, if there are, the conditions for getting a variance. Do not exist on these lots. As you've just declared, or as you've, as you've shown, the state is defining the reason for variance. So this whole thing is kind of bizarre. Anyway, it was just a comment. I'll take it back. Thank you.
I would agree with you there.
I, I want to get this going. Can I move to recommend unfavorable action? This is not, this does not meet the standard for a variance.
And I will second that.
Discussion? Please vote.
Hannah, aye.
Jurious, aye.
Meister, aye.
Wolf, aye. Sorry.
Von Mary, aye. Motion passes to recommend unfavorable action. It does not meet the definition of a variance. Moving onward to forty-three Glen Road. Petition number three nine one six. Brian?
Sorry, I thought my screen was shared, but it wasn't. How about now? Okay, forty-three Glen. So this is a special permit. For three five five, that's permitted to construct an addition that will be located closer to the side property line than permitted as of right. Historical commission voted unanimously no adverse impact. Design review voted unanimously for favorable action with no conditions. So the proposal here entails the connection of an existing garage. To an existing one and a half story house along with an addition in the rear of the property that will not be prominent. This is a rather large addition, but does not appear to negatively affect the neighborhood with respect to scale or character. Due to the existing garage in the setback, I do not see the connection of the house to it as an issue. And I agree with the design review and the historical commission, and I recommend favorable action with regards to this petition.
Members of the planning board?
Let's move it forward. Favorite recommend favorable action.
Was that a motion, Maureen?
Yes, I make a motion to recommend favorable action.
And I second the motion.
Discussion? Vote? Please?
Confused. I thought they were also adding a garage.
The garage exists. They're attaching the garage, they're, they're attaching the garage with the house. So it's, you know, there's a space in between right now between the garage and the house. So they're, they're adding, they're filling in that space. And reconfiguring the space in between.
Okay, it says proposed garage. So I thought they were making it bigger.
They definitely, no, they're definitely reconfiguring, but I'm just saying there is a garage there now is all I'm saying.
There is an existing garage and then they're doubling that size with a garage to fill the space between the house and the existing garage. So my understanding is they're using the existing garage. And then filling the space between the existing garage and the house, which includes another garage stall. But it's both setback from the house.
Yep, okay. Hannah, aye.
Jurious, aye.
Meister, aye.
Wolf, aye.
Von Mary, aye. Motion passes to recommend favorable action. On forty-three Glen Road to the zoning board of appeals. Moving onward to Abbey Road and the tripart, part E agreement. Brian?
Yep, hold on a second. I'm gonna get what I need up. So we, actually, it's in my planner notes. Already. So we are here for two reasons. And the applicant is here to explain it as well. We also have Art and, Art Krieger and Julian Bardre here from Anderson and Krieger as legal counsel. So I'm actually going to start here with number two first. So here is, the applicant wishes to transfer funds out of an existing account uh that's in the developers', uh, the developers' account and put it into a new account where the new owners of lots one, two, one through three will take over their responsibility as the HOA from Five Points. Legal counsel was okay with this in principle, but felt the vote of the board would be the cleanest way to proceed. Um, I also sent a document today outlining um, what uh, that is coming from the applicant that, that outlines the transfer of money and I can, I can bring that up in just a second. Uh, Art, if you wanted to add anything while I find that, um, but I, I don't know if there's any much more to add for this, for this uh portion of the, of the meeting.
There's, uh, thanks, Brian, there, I do want to add something. Good evening, um, Madam Chair, members of the board. The um, tripartite agreement says that it, it carved out a few uh items of post-construction work. Work that would be, that might have to be done after construction of the houses, such as resetting the stone monuments, uh landscaping on lots three and four, et cetera. Um, and the agreement says that if the board has issued a certificate of completion for all the rest of the work, um, then the applicant can substitute security for the post-construction work by putting up money from the homeowners association. So the, the letter from the uh, from Rockland Trust that you now have on the screen, uh, Brian, can you enlarge that at all? Okay, um, that, that third paragraph quotes the second of those conditions. If the board receives uh substitute security that's satisfactory, uh, it shall release the corresponding amount of money. Um, it did not quote the first part, which is that the board had to have complete, issued a certificate of completion for the non-post-construction work. Uh, and as you see from this quote, the substitute security applies only to the post-construction work. So the question is whether the board has issued a certificate of completion for the rest of the work yet. If so, this is fine. If not, then it doesn't meet the standards of tripartite agreement.
We have not issued such a letter.
We haven't issued that.
Well, the, uh, the agreement's, the agreement's pretty clear.
So then you're saying that you are not okay with a new account being created?
Yeah, I, I talked to Brian, I'm okay with Rockland Trust's letter if the conditions were met, but now I'm hearing that one of the conditions has not been met. At this point, Madam Chair, maybe you want to hear from the applicant or his counsel?
Um, this is Kurt James, I don't know if you can hear me?
Yes, Kurt.
Mr. James, who are you?
Hi, this is Kurt James, I'm an attorney at KJP Partners in Boston and I represent Five Points Development LLC in this matter. Um, Art, I, I guess what, if, can I address Art directly?
Um, technically, you're supposed to address the chair.
Okay, so Madam Chair, if I could just maybe add a couple things. When we prepared this agreement, I think it was contemplated, uh, or at least it was unclear when the home sales were going to occur. And so I think it was contemplated that we would have completed all of the work before we actually had money in this homeowners association to fund this replacement account. But in fact, the closings did occur earlier than when the rest of the work was done. And so um, although Art is right, the town council is correct that that is the reading of this paragraph, um, I, I would submit that it's certainly, uh, given the money is in the bank account, um, and it's in the same bank that is a party to this agreement and therefore it's, it constitutes adequate security um, for the obligations of the developer. Um, I would respectfully request that the, the board waive this first requirement that the developer have, have completed all the rest of the work. Um, and I think it would be inequitable for the developer to have to have this $30,000 odd in two different accounts to secure the same obligations.
Thank you, Mr. James. Members of the planning board, questions for Art?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, this development agreement was, um, who was the signatories? From the town side or?
This is not the. This is the tri-party agreement?
Yes.
This is your agreement, not the select board's.
Right, so we are the signatories, so we can make decisions on this. Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure there weren't, there wasn't yet another party.
Art, how are you advising the planning board on this?
Well, I have, first I, I would just want to respond to what uh, Mr. James said. The parties, I think, did contemplate initially that the houses would be built and sold. And then, then it changed uh, to uh, the sale of the lots with the houses being built later. So I don't think it's accurate to say that um, that the tripartite was not drafted with this, with this situation in mind. My recommendation, um, I mean, the, the board, I, I'd have to look and see if the tripartite agreement contains a waiver provision. The, the cleanest way to do it, although it would take, you know, involve more procedure, is to modify the tripartite agreement to take out that first condition. But the condition is pretty clear, uh, and I'm not hearing that it's disputed. Um, and there's no reason in terms of, there's no catch 22 in requiring the developer to complete all the rest of the work and then substitute security for the post-construction work if that's what he wants to do. Um, so I'm not seeing any particular inequity here. If the board wants to waive it, I would want to look and see if there's a waiver provision. But uh, if the board doesn't want to waive it, it's not obligated to.
Uh, if I may be heard again, please?
Yes, Mr. James?
Um, so I, I'm looking through, just doing a quick word search. I'm not sure that I see a waiver provision in here or that we necessarily contemplated one. Um, again, I, I think we went back and forth a lot in, on this paragraph, to be honest. And I'm not really sure why we thought it was relevant that he, that the developer had to complete all the rest of the work before um, he could substitute the collateral. Again, the fact is that, that he sold three lots. The owner of the, of those three lots has contributed to the homeowners association. The developer has actually contributed himself for the other two lots. So all five lots have contributed into this bank account. Um, and so the fact is that now there's double the amount of cash securing these obligations. Um, if it's, if town council believes that the board doesn't have the authority to, to simply waive this based on the subdivision rules and regulations, which I would submit that they do, then um, I would respectfully request that we um, that, that the board agrees to amend this, this uh, agreement to delete that first um, sub-paragraph X and leave it to town council and maybe one or two delegated board members to approve the form of that amendment.
Um, Art, would that um, provide uh, protection for the town if we did that? In terms of making sure that the money is available? I, I don't follow all the ins and outs of this, but I want to make sure that the town is protected.
Um, Mr. James is right, that if the ta, if the board is holding or if the bank is holding for the benefit of the board, the total amount that's in the tripartite agreement, uh, I'm not sure it matters who put the money up or which account it's in, as long as you have equal access to both accounts. And I, I'm not suggesting that the, that the developers required to, to put up double the money or the same amount from two different sources. Um, I'm not clear why, I, I'm, I guess I'm not clear how far the project is from being entitled to a certificate of completion on the, on the rest of the work, the work not including the post-construction items. The simplest thing to do would be if, if it's, if the rest of the work is done, then let's get it inspected, issue a certificate of completion, then, then under, then, then there's no issue uh, under the tripartite agreement based on the Rockland Trust letter.
Can I ask a question and maybe answer the question you just asked?
Quickly, Mr. Miller, please.
So the question I have is, it seems like the condition that we're talking about here is a bit of a non-sequitur because the, the agreement requires all the work to be done in order to modify the escrow amount. I mean, that, that's kind of a moot point. If all the work's done, there's, there's never gonna be a need to modify the escrow amount. So that seems to collapse on itself a little bit, just the reasoning there. If I understand it correctly, I'm not so sure that I do. And then, go ahead.
Um, so this is, this is Kurt again, um, if I could just address um, the, the town council again through the, the chair. I, I don't think we are um, close to getting the final sign off. And I think the, the main delay is that the, uh, the trees were planted. Um, but I believe that it's the town's position that those need to um, stay through the winter. And so we're looking at, you know, three, four, five, six months from now.
Right, and, and the other, the other matter to that is that the town had expressed a preference that we not put the final layer of pavement on until after this coming winter and until after all the houses were built. If you take the latter case, it could be another two years before the final layer of pavement is put on that road if we wait until all the houses are built. I'm not suggesting that I support that direction, but that is a point that the planning board and the town engineer have raised in the past that that would be preferable. So we could be as, as little as five or six months away or as long as two plus years away uh, from having the whole job completed. Outside of that, we only have that final pavement and the issues associated with the final pavement left. Uh, Beth has also asked that we test the sewer line when homes are actually connected. So that's o- one additional item that is on that list of things to do that unfortunately won't be done until all the houses are built. So we've got a, a bit of a ways to go on a very small list of items.
Okay.
So again, we would respectfully request that we have a very simple amendment deleting just that sub-paragraph X, uh, which we could prepare and have to town council review in the morning.
Um, let me, let me just point out that at least as to the final paving, that's defined in paragraph nine of the tripartite agreement as one of the items for, of post-construction work. So nobody is sugge, I, I wasn't suggesting that um, the release of this money needs to wait for the, or the substitute of security needs to wait for the post-construction paving.
Right, so I think we're, we're mainly talking about the trees, so that's how that, let's just say it's six months roughly. So again, we'd respectfully request that we not have to secure, doubly secure these obligations for that period of time.
But, but um, if I may um, point out that the, the double securing is not because, is not through your client, Mr. James, it's because the homeowner association is also securing it. So these are two separate entities. And so I, I don't know that it, it, what sort of a um, wh- what's, what's the impact on, I mean, we, I was there when we discussed at the end this, the, the tripartite agreement and I realize it went through a lot of um, changes, but we did agree to it. And so I'm trying to understand what it is, why is this a burden to your client? When it's the homeowners association who has apparently put in a big chunk of dough on this?
Well, again, it's the homeowners that put up the money and he's, he's two of the five owners. And again, I think there was contemplated that, although you're right, it's two, I think that was the whole idea of this paragraph, was that once the homeowners association fund, uh, account was funded, that the developer would be released of these, this dual security obligation.
I, I think, I think, I think the issue here is that lots four and five have not been sold yet. That's why Kurt James just said that, that Craig still owns two of the lots. If, if they were all sold, then you'd have the homeowners association consisting of all, all other people. Uh, it wouldn't be a burden on Mr. Miller. Um, and the rationale at that point is that he should have to do all, everything except the post-construction work. Don't saddle the homeowners with that. Uh, that you can saddle them only with the post-construction work because he's, he's long gone at that point. Um, I think that's, that's why this issue has arisen is because he has not e- either chosen not to or but not been able to, I don't know, uh, sold lots four and five. Um, and so the question is whether that, uh, whether the board wants to, you know, bear in mind that he's put up some money twice. Uh, as two fifths of the homeowners association, he's, he's put up 40% of that part of the money. Uh, which, and I guess 40% of 32,000 is uh, uh, seven, 6,800 or something like that. Or I'm sorry, about 13,000 or 14,000. So that, that's what he's put up, that, that's, that's double. Do you have an answer to your question? The other 60% of that 32,000, I take it was put up by the owners of lots one to three, who are other people?
Well, well, again, if I may, I'm trying not to be argumentative. I, I just don't see any need for there to be, for the town to be secured twice for a single obligation. And I, 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 again, I, it's late, I know folks just want to go home. I, it's, it's just such a simple matter to delete this sentence, this isn't gonna, this has no impact on the, deleting that sub-paragraph X has no impact on completion of the work.
Um, Art, uh, with the homeowners association, um, those funds are also used for other things besides development funds. And I'm unclear on where the other property owner is on those. And as they have the majority vote on the homeowners association, I'm unclear on how that all works.
If I may respond to that?
Yep.
So there actually are two amounts that were deposited into the HOA account. Um, to your point, yes, there are other amounts that are deposited for other purposes for operating costs. The amounts that are set forth in the bank's letter uh, to secure these obligations are just deposited for these purposes, not, not for any other purpose.
So they're holding more than the sum noted in this letter?
Yeah, yes, the, the bank, there, there's another bank account that the homeowners association holds for, for those other costs that you're referring to.
Maintenance, cleaning.
Exactly, insurance, yes.
Insurance. All of those standard uh, annual expenses are covered with a separate account. This account, which is the special assessment that was put on the five lots specifically in response to the items, the post-construction items, but there's, there's a trigger for why this is coming up. It's the list of post-construction items and who is responsible for doing those items or holding those items up from being completed. That's why the homeowners association is stepping in now to secure those. It's because the HOA and the development of those lots by the developers to put houses on is what's causing this need to flip the security from the original developer onto the HOA because the HOA is the entity that will go forward and, and actually build those, you know, not build the houses, but be responsible for the road going forward.
So again, in terms of the timing, I, I certainly wasn't aware when we negotiated this agreement that the trees needed to be in place till next spring. So it could, it could well have been the case that the, we could have had a certificate of completion for everything else when the, when the three or the five lots were sold, but that just didn't happen. Um, and so again, I'm, we're just respectfully requesting that we reflect the, the equities of the situation here by deleting that subsection.
Um, Madam Chair, can I, uh, can I ask a question or two, maybe, maybe help cut through this?
Thank you, Art, please do.
Um, this is for Beth and Brian. Um, the 65,000 that's in the, in escrow, uh, it is intended to cover both the rest of the construction and the post-construction work, right? It's everything, everything on, on that list?
That is my, uh, that's my take, um, Beth?
I just, I haven't gone back to that table that Beth, that Beth had put together.
Yeah, I, I don't have, um, I haven't looked at that table um, in a little bit. So I don't have complete recollection of all the items on that list, but that seems appropriate.
Okay, and, and the 32,000 that's been put up, um, I don't know, I don't know how that amount was arrived at, the 32,000 from the homeowners association. I don't know how that was arrived at. If, if that can be used for not only post-construction items, which is what the HOA is supposed to be on the hook for, but also the construction items that the developer is supposed to be responsible for, then swapping out the security is fine. Do you have, the town will be protected, to answer your question. Uh, and the developer has then transferred that to the homeowners association. But the idea again was not to saddle, saddle the homeowners. But the idea again was not to saddle the homeowners' association with anything but the post-construction work. And so I don't know what the 32,000 is, what it represents.
It is, it is meant to represent the post-closing work.
And I could further say that we'll be easily able to identify the clarity on this with you, Art, with Brian, with Beth, with the designees from the planning board. This is a very simple list of items that once you see how we arrived at it, it will make perfect sense. We've been very black and white about the definition on this.
But again, we're just asking for a dollar-for-dollar swap, so that the town will be in exactly the same position based on the bank's letter the day after the swap.
I understand that. But again, the point of this provision was to protect the homeowners' association from being left with a half-completed project, to protect the homeowners as well as the town.
I know tonight's not the night to go through chapter and verse on that, but we're happy to show you how we got there. It'll be very clear.
I think maybe, sorry, this is Brian. I think maybe at this point, it might make sense if the board was so willing to authorize legal counsel and myself to get to the bottom of this.
Yes, definitely. Thank you, Brian. This is not helpful for the board to be sitting through this.
No, I also agree. I agree exactly with Art said. It's also to protect the homeowners. And I'm confused on why, and maybe they're here and meant to speak, the owner of the other lots hasn't spoken or said anything because they're also taking on this, so.
I think, can we, Heather, though, just, I think, turn this back to Art?
No, that's, I'm just, I'm just asking that. So I would, I agree more, and I think Brian and Art can work it out from here and just make sure you protect the homeowners and you protect the town in your.
Do we need to vote to allow Art to relax the language?
That's our request, please.
And so that's, I'm wondering if we go forward.
Art, do you need a vote? Brian, do we need a vote?
Yeah, you have to authorize a waiver of that first, or deletion of that first clause or a waiver, the first condition. It's subject to my approval, the approval of the chair or a delegate of the planning board. Or else just have us come back to you in two weeks with a modified agreement or a waiver.
I'd rather just see the whole thing later. So that's my preference.
I don't know when your next meeting is.
No, well, okay, folks, do we want to do it on the Monday before Election Day, November 2nd?
Art, are you available?
Good question.
It's a Monday evening. We had to move because of elections and town meeting and everything else, so.
Yeah, I'm available then.
So we have, we're continuing Mount Vernon, and we have the 7:30 slot between 7:30 and 7:40. Or we could do it, you pick the time, Heather. 8:30? I don't know. We don't, we were saying we didn't want a long night.
Our hope is that we'll have an amendment that just needs to be approved.
I would just say we would do it at, if it's at 8:40, I say we give that 30 minutes to close it out and do what we need to do for that. So that would bring us to 8:10?
Sounds good.
We do have wiggle room in that because it's not a hearing, so approximately 8:10 right now on the second, Art.
That's fine. It shouldn't take 30 minutes one way or the other.
Okay, thank you. And we'll work through that. If it's okay with the board, I'll support Brian and Art in that to get it to a place for the board to come back to it.
Thank you.
Heather, would you like a volunteer so that you don't have to do that?
Go for it.
Okay. I will take it on, so it's, I will join Art and Brian.
All right, so no motion is needed at this time then?
Yep. Do you want to address the other, number one?
Yes. Let me get there. Okay, number one. So the applicant wishes to decrease the money in escrow from 13, around $13,000 to around $3,000 per the email dated 9/29 and subsequent letters since. The applicant states that the extra 10K was not something he felt was appropriate at the time of creation of the tri-party. The money in question is being held in escrow in case the town needs to perform a full survey on the land in the future, for whatever reason, if the developer leaves the site. This is based on a recommendation from the town engineer, and we all supported it. Since that time, I've reached out to other land surveyors in Winchester and that do work in Winchester and beyond, and, you know, they have, they have said that requiring a full survey after the fact is something that is totally reasonable. The applicant has elevated this matter to the town manager and to legal counsel. There's always reason to believe that we should check others' work if we're going to performing any site analysis or development on a site. This is backed up, like I said, by two registered land surveyors. The applicant claims we are holding hostage the 10K and that it's unfair and directly, directed solely at him. I disagree with the sentiment and recommend the figure that was agreed upon at the time of the tri-party agreement based upon the conversations I have had with registered land surveyors and the recommendation of the town engineer.
Art, your opinion?
This is not really a legal issue. This is whether there's a rational basis to justify the $13,000 figure. The dispute is about whether, if five points was to default, a new, a survey of the final work would have to go back and resurvey all the previous work, or whether somebody could just pick up what's been done to date and survey the delta, noting that they're not really vouching for the previous work. Mr. Miller and the opinion that he got says that that's common practice. The town engineer and the discussions that Brian just referred to say that that's not appropriate. And unless, unless I thought some, the town staff was acting out of some improper motivation or was completely, being completely arbitrary, in which case I would recommend that that not be, not be done. There's no legal issue, and I do not see any evidence that there's any improper motive here, although Mr. Miller may disagree with that. But I, and I also don't, don't see, based on town engineer's experience and the consultations that Brian just had, that it's completely irrational. So at that point, there's no legal issue. If the board, if the board is persuaded by the applicant that that's done all the time, that's fine. But if the board refers to town, the town engineer, then the 13,000 stays.
I am just going to jump in. I, this is not done all the time. It's not a consistent thing where you would take someone else's drawings and then put your stamp on top of it. Usually you don't because there's a liability issue. And so from my perspective on the towns, it is, it is reasonable and fair for the town to hold 13,000. Members of the planning board, do you have any questions?
Do we need to take any action, or do we?
No, not unless you're going to reduce the, reduce it.
Well, you should, you should, let me just, you should, you should vote on the request one way or the other, so there's a record of what you're doing.
Very good. Heather?
Can we be heard? Madam Chairman? Can the applicant be heard?
I don't think it's going to change my position. I'm well informed on this, but go ahead.
Well, I guess I would just respectfully point out that the, you know, the recommendation for this approach is coming from the president of the Massachusetts Association of Land Surveyors and Civil Engineers. It's not simply from some random surveyor that folks have spoken with. So this is from a recognized statewide trade association. You've approved the ASBIL plans already. The only thing that needs to be done is just the final paving. That's the only, that's literally the only piece of work that's left. No one would require you to do a completely new ASBIL survey just to measure the two inches of asphalt that you're putting on. That, that does, that makes no sense. Respectfully.
That's why I went through the trouble of talking to the chairman of MALC, because this, in terms of order of degree, the issue that we're talking about getting survey coverage for is incredibly minor. And in that sense, when the chairman of the Massachusetts Association of Land Surveyors looked at the issue, he said it was completely appropriate for a new surveyor to have his stamp cover the final pavement grades and let the previous surveyor's stamp cover everything else. There's nothing inappropriate about this. I've gotten three different surveyors to provide scopes of work that support that direction. If they felt in any way that that was inappropriate, they wouldn't have put forth a proposal. So, you know, we're following the letter of the law here, and yet you guys, it seems to be a pretty arbitrary position based on a tiny bit of information that needs to be obtained in the final survey. I've done 99.9% of the survey already, and it's been accepted.
Please mute your mics. Beth? Are you here?
Yep.
Do you want to comment?
Yeah, so my position is that the town doesn't own the survey that they've completed. So, you know, if they were to default, the town doesn't have that data either in AutoCAD format or in any other way that we can just supply it to a surveyor. So that's issue number one. And issue number two, I agree that there's not a ton left to do on the survey, but, you know, the project isn't complete, and I don't think we should be releasing money for the ASBIL until the project is fully complete and we've signed off on the final ASBIL. That's in our protocol throughout every other subdivision that I've worked on with the town. I think we all know that we've run into difficulties closing out these projects in the past, and I think the town is best served by holding that amount until we do receive the final ASBIL from the project. And for the record, the planning board hasn't approved or disapproved any of the ASBILs. It's just been reviewed by staff.
So I'm going to jump in and make the motion. It's, as Art said, we just need to be on record. So I'm going to make a motion to accept the town engineer's recommendation and basically leave the escrow as it stands.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. I'd like to make a comment.
You, yes, discussion, please.
I just want to point out that I have a letter that Mr. Miller has written, and I would have hoped that it was a little more objective in its language to the head of whatever this organization is. But I'm not, I don't know enough about this to say whether or not this is, you know, is it 99.5% complete? I don't know. That's his opinion. I would say that if we were to take the opinion of this group, then it should be done with someone preparing an objective presentation of the facts. So, and I will, since I second the motion, I concur that we should follow the town engineer's recommendation.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes, legal, you may always interject, Art.
This is really for the applicant or his counsel. If this 13,000 is for one of the items of post-construction work, if the security is swapped pursuant to item number two that we did a few minutes ago, so that it's homeowners' association money that's at stake, that includes that 13,000 and not Mr. Miller's or Five Points on all of their money, is this issue moot? Is this issue, that is, does the board still need to care about this request to reduce it from 13 to three if it's now homeowners' association money?
That's a real good question. I think the issue is moot, but it's still unfair, in my opinion, to saddle even the homeowners' association with a $13,000 cost for something that's only going to cost $3,000. So your point is well taken. For me personally, it would be moot, even though I am two-fifths of the HOA funds, but it's still not appropriate. And I couldn't disagree more. I'm happy to give town the ownership of the documents, the CAD files, whatever it takes to make this simple and easy. It's not going to cost $13,000 to go out and measure final pavement grades on that road. It's just not right.
Well, I just want to say we have a motion on the floor, and it's been.
There's a motion on the floor. We were in discussion. Any more comments? Heather, Cheryl, anyone have any comments? Let's do the vote.
Hanan, aye.
Juris, aye.
Meister, aye?
Wolf, aye.
Von Mary, aye. Motion passes.
Going to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Kurt, we'll talk about the other matter.
He may have left, Art.
Yep.
All right, there's a motion to adjourn, 46 minutes behind schedule.
Did someone move?
I did. Maureen moved, yeah. It's not been seconded.
I would love to talk about something else, but I don't think we have the time today. So I will second.
All those in favor?
Hanan, aye.
Juris, aye.
Meister, aye.
Wolf, aye.
Von Mary, aye. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and we will see you again at our next meeting. Till then.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Thanks, Heather.
It's good night.
Bye, Art, Brian, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Thank you, Brian.